Well, good morning, everyone. I'm Christine Robinson, Mayor of West Gray, and welcome to our June 30th, 2020 Committee of the Whole meeting. We are at the end of June. Where did that month go? For today, we're using audio only to conduct this electronic meeting. As you know, video at this point is not possible due to the limited bandwidth in some areas of West Gray. Bandwidth is challenging our ability to do a complete video broadcast, although we are working on it. But for now, we'll be sharing today's agenda in addition to the audio. For item one, the call to order. All members of Council, sitting as committee are present, as indicated through their log on. We do have a quorum. The agenda has been posted and circulated. This meeting is being recorded and will be posted on our newly revised website at www.westgray.com. The technology for this meeting is managed by staff. I would ask that anyone refrain from clicking buttons throughout the meeting unless prompted. Before we continue, I'd ask Recreation Supervisor Cody Hewlett to give an overview of some of the key points for this morning's meeting. Supervisor Hewlett?
Good morning. If you get disconnected at any time during this meeting, you can dial 1-647-558-0588 and enter the meeting ID 88290517980 to join us through the phone. Both members of Council and staff have been briefed on the various features of the Zoom meeting software and will be using the raise their hand function to speak. Members of Council will be using the green checkmark button to vote in favor of a motion and the red X to vote against motion. Each member of Council will then also be called upon verbally to confirm their vote for the benefit of any guests who have joined us over the phone rather than using the online software. If you have any technical issues throughout the meeting, you can send a chat message to myself, Cody Hewlett, Recreation Supervisor during the meeting, and I will assist you. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Hewlett. We appreciate that information. On item two now, Declaration of pecuniary interests. Members of committee, are there any declarations of pecuniary interests? If so, please raise your hand now. If at any point you determine that you do have a pecuniary interest or an interest, that would be the appropriate time to identify it. All right, we're moving on to item three. We have a presentation under item number 3.1, Mary Ann Love, ML Consulting. Madam CIO, I'm going to turn to you first to provide the introduction before we move on to Mary Ann Love. Thank you.
Thank you, and good morning, Madam Mayor, members of Council, and I'd like to extend a welcome to Mary Ann for joining us this morning. Mary Ann's focuses, her focus today is on the Council compensation component of this project. Council will recall that the project actually has four parts, a wage market review, a job description review as well, and the library is the third piece of it in addition to the Council compensation. The RFP that was issued was also provided to the province as part of the grant application that we submitted, and we were successful in achieving. And our approach in this, Mary Ann will give a little bit more detail, is to start focusing on the human resources piece, get the foundation of our job descriptions, what folks are working on, and through that, we intend that that will help shape the organizational and operational review, which will eventually, it's anticipated, that it will identify gaps and efficiencies through the entire process that we will bring to Council. It will become a public document as part of the grant criteria, and we'll see where we land at the end of August. So with that, I think Mary Ann is queued up and ready to go. We will be sharing the screen for her so that she can concentrate on her presentation and an opportunity for questions and answers.
Wonderful, thank you. And good morning, Mary Ann.
Can anybody, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I've been unmuted very much, Madam Mayor. Very happy to be with you today, and I understand Cody's going to help me out with the slides this morning.
Yes, he will.
Okay, so thank you very much. So we'll just move to the background slide, Cody. So in terms of background and your CIO, Laura has touched on much of this, but I'll just walk through a little bit of the background as well. We're conducting an organizational compensation review. We do have four components. We're taking a look at the current organization structure, conducting a wage and compensation review for employee positions. There will be a review of elected official remuneration and a library operations review. We're really focusing on the middle two bullets at this point, and so conducting a wage and compensation review for the employee positions and the elected official piece as well. We've made good headway on the employee wage and compensation review. We've already commenced work on that. I've already commenced work on the elected official remuneration component as well. So we're going to provide an update of the work currently underway, and I think importantly as well as to receive feedback from Council on the elements of the Council remuneration review, because once we affirm that up, we'll be able to move forward and collect the data that's required for analysis. Okay, Cody. Thanks. In terms of the employee compensation review, the primary objective is to take a look at the West Gray's compensation program to ensure that the municipality is able to attract and retain employees, checking our pay practices to the external pay market. Want to make sure as well that we're compliant with pay equity legislation and make sure that we are able to say that we pay internally equitably and we have no wage compression issues. Through this review, I'll be introducing systems and methods that will stay with the organization. These systems and methods, the processes, will enable an ease of administration and maintenance going forward. They have proven to provide fair, reasonable results. They will achieve a compliance with legislation and be able to generate fiscally responsible salary administration practices. So all of this will come forward to Council at the end of the project in terms of the outputs, the analysis, the recommendations, and implementation strategies going forward. This slide basically just sets out the compensation program components. It also sets out key practices that would be in, basically in every municipality in terms of their pay administration practices. We touch on each one of these in this element of the review that I'm conducting now. So start with collecting current job information. Evaluate the positions. I'll be evaluating the positions using a new job evaluation system that I'm introducing to the organization. Once the positions are evaluated and ranked and rank order prepared, I'm able to group the positions of similar value and conduct a pay equity analysis to ensure we continue to maintain compliance with the Pay Equity Act. Those first three steps are really internal to West Gray. The fourth step is taking a look at how the West Gray job rates or maximum rates for positions compare to the external market. And I have a few slides to share with you on work that's been done on that element of the review as well. And then, once that's done, I'm able to take a look at the market data and recommend a reasonable pay target to meet the goals and objectives of the organization and put those pay targets into, put them in place with job rates that will be reflected in a new salary grid. So each one of these steps is impacting the positions in the organizations. This is really a review of the positions and the work that's being performed by employees in the organization. And I think it's fundamental to understanding how pieces in the organization work together, how positions are designed, and will allow me then to move forward with the organizational element of the review once this is pretty much completed. The other elements that, and you don't need to go back, Cody, but there's a reference on that slide as well with regards to performance management practices and ongoing maintenance. And those would be things that can be introduced to the organization once this review has been completed. So there's some key concepts on this slide that are being referenced. We have, and these are concepts that we actually met with employees and worked through each of these concepts and the approach that would be taken in the review. But when we talk about internal equity, we want to ensure that we're paying fairly, and we can say we pay fairly as an organization when the value of the job is determined through a job evaluation process. Job evaluation will provide a relative value of positions in the employee group. Pay equity is a legislated term, and it's, the Pay Equity Act requires that there be no pay discrimination between female, jobs typically performed or actually performed by females as compared to those performed by males that are of similar value. So in order to be able to ensure that we're pay equity compliant, we have to do job evaluation, collect job data, and do the job evaluation first. Market competitiveness is how we compare our rates to the external pay market. We can say we are market competitive when we have salary grades that are internally fair and equitable and externally competitive based on a review of the external comparator data and the organization's pay philosophy or pay practice. And in terms of a compensation philosophy or pay practice, it really is many times codified in terms of competitive pay. So competitive pay is certainly a key element. It's not the only element, but it's a key element in attracting, retaining, and rewarding quality employees. Municipal pay policy is typically described by identifying a percentile target. So you'll often hear that we, you know, a municipality would be paying at the 50th percentile or the 60th percentile of the defined pay market. So through this review, I will be examining how the municipality's positions align with various pay market percentiles that are going to be calculated based on the comparator group. Okay. In terms of the job evaluation process, I just wanted to maybe drill down a little bit on that. As I said earlier, I'm going to be introducing a new job evaluation system. The system measures skill, effort, responsibility, and working conditions for each position. I've also introduced a new job description format. It's being used to collect current job information for all of the municipality's positions, including those in the library. I held, we held an employee meeting on June 18th to explain the timelines, the process of the review, and to give the employees some tips on how to complete the job descriptions. So the descriptions will be drafted by managers with employee engagement and sign off. They will be finalized and forwarded to the consultants, to myself, on July 6th. And I had a chat with both the library CEO and the municipality's CIO yesterday, and we're on track to meet those targets. The consultant then, being myself, will evaluate the jobs. I'll prepare preliminary banding framework that'll have the jobs of similar value within bands, and I'll review the preliminary results with the CIO. As I said earlier, this is a really key component of the overall project. It's, we're building sort of the house, if you will, from job design up. It gives me a really great opportunity to understand what's in each of the positions currently and how we might best perhaps realign some positions or where there are some gaps and maybe some efficiencies can be attained. We'll move to the next one, Cody. Thanks. So some of the key operating concepts that I had reviewed with the employees, and I can maybe touch on them here as well, is that we like to, I like to review the value of the jobs early on in the process to also understand, or not just to understand the content, but to ensure we have a defensible pay equity analysis. The value of the position determines the band placement. It also forms the foundation for the revised salary grid. We currently have a banding framework in place. That's the banding framework that holds your positions in your current salary grid. So I'll test that framework based on the job evaluation results, the organization design, and the pay market. And the framework itself may be modified. The band placement provides a basis for determining the male comparators for pay equity purposes. And a key consideration here or important point is that all jobs that are in a band, regardless of the point value, will benefit from the same job rate in the newly developed salary grid, and this will achieve internal equity. Okay, we'll go to the next one, Cody. In terms of pay equity, the purpose is to ensure there's no pay discrimination between male and female jobs. And it is 2020, and it seems sometimes odd to take a look at gender determination. However, the Act requires that this be done for the purposes of the analysis. And the municipality has a good practice. The information that's been, I've been able to review has got, has a good practice of taking a look at gender dominance and pay equity compliance historically. So I'll make sure that we do that again in this review. So important thing to note is that pay equity can increase the minimum amount of a job rate for female-dominated job classes. It can raise the floor up. That's some of the key elements of the legislation. Okay. In terms of the external pay market, I'll be preparing a custom survey. As I had, I've prepared many a custom survey for other municipalities in the province. I use the same approach to selection of the criteria as I've had with others. We start by determining who would be in the pool. So we look to municipalities of comparable size. There's many measures of size. Could be population, households, operating expenses. We like to choose employees that, or sorry, municipalities that have similar employment markets, equivalent scope of services. And of course, innovative service delivery is also a key element to the extent that those are, you know, that's a goal, an objective of this organization as well. It'll be a municipal pay market focus. I can source published private sector market data if required. However, the survey and the analysis really goes on position matching, and it's very difficult to match the content of our positions in the municipal sector to many of the positions in the private. So it tends to be these surveys and the analyses tend to be more municipally based. I have a list of preliminary comparators that I'll share with Council. It may be slightly modified as the project moves forward and I start working with the data. In terms of the approach, I will match the West Gray positions, basically looking at the job rates, the maximum rates, to positions and their maximum rates compared to municipalities. I took, have regard to the organization charts, the job designs, the salary and wage schedules as well. I'll prepare, excuse me, I'll prepare an hourly and an annual job rate analysis and then run various percentile comparisons from that. A market summary will be prepared. It'll show how the West Gray positions compare. Shouldn't miss the positions that were able to be matched using the various percentile targets. And the summary, market summary results will be used to determine how we and West Gray align with the identified pay market. And from that, I'll recommend a pay policy or pay philosophy, if you will, and prepare revised job rates for pay bands where required. And we would see those in a recommended salary grid. So this is the list of comparators. And what I should sort of, I guess, as a qualifier, I would say in the many years of work that I've, many years that I've worked with municipalities, I've never seen a perfect list of comparators. We try to put together a list based on the criteria that I've reflected upon this morning. And I've done some groupings here with regards to, or some identifiers here with regards to regional locations. So you can see their county, district, region has identified. Population has been sourced from 2016 Stats Canada, so that's dated, but it's a relative measure. And the operating expenses have been lifted from the 2018 FIR data. The 2019 is not complete yet in terms of the posted information. And you can see West Gray is positioned at the lower end of the slide here, and the others are listed above. The only ranking I've done is through population. You'll see I've gone from the lowest to the highest just to give you a sense of relativity. So we're probably in around the midpoint of the population numbers there, all right? And this is a place, as I said, to start. We've also had occasion to speak with the library's CEO yesterday, and I think there are three or four other municipalities that she believes that are relevant, given the number of branches and the size and the scope of the library. So we will be pulling in that data as well. We've also had an opportunity to speak to the fire chief to ensure that there will be some good comparators within this group for comparison in fire service. And if there's a few others that we need to gather, then we certainly will as we work, as I work through the project. In terms of the elected official remuneration, I would be preparing a comparative analysis of key elements of the elected official remuneration using preliminary, using this preliminary municipal comparator group. That's usually where I'll start. And as I said, if we need to pull in other comparators, we certainly can. So today, Council gets a, has an opportunity to take a look at that list of comparators and also the elements of remuneration that we would like to survey from, survey from the, survey with the other municipalities. So the primary focus of the review will be on the annual base pay. That is the larger component, largest component of remuneration. But there are other ancillary elements of compensation that are typically of interest. And I would like to hear, like, to understand today from Council whether that you think that we've met the mark or if there's anything else that you would like us to probe. I think the next slide, Cody, will show us the elements. Here we go here. So this is basically the elements that have identified for the survey. What we've done here on this slide is completed West Gray's proportions. So you can see that the base salary has been identified. Like to probe as to whether our comparators have made any adjustments with regards to the 1/3 tax-free treatment that was eliminated in January of 2019. In terms of meeting per diems, some organizations will cover meeting per diems as well for council meetings or special meetings of council. So we'd want to know what they are, whether they do or not, and then if they do, what the rates are, whether or not health benefits are provided, any retirement benefits, could be RSP or Omer's, whether they are provided. Conference attendance is typically probed as well. That's of interest. Meal allowances or reimbursement. How annual increases for council-based pay is affected, what the method is. We would typically, I would typically ask that if there's any reimbursement for travel or technology provided. And in terms of technology, we were thinking of taking a look at whether a laptop, iPad, cell phone, or if there's an allowance that's provided. Terms of annual increase as well, that's left, that's stated there as well as the method, how annual increases are affected. So that is, in a nutshell, on one slide, basically what we are looking, the information we're looking to gather and to compare. When it comes in, Council would see a comparative analysis on base pay based on percentile targets, similar to the way I would be presenting the salary information for the employee compensation. The other elements are very hard to compare numerically, so it's more based on observations in terms of what common practice is with regards to the other elements of remuneration. And that would all come forward in a summary report for Council. Okay. And in terms of next steps, we'd like to be able to finalize the council remuneration elements to be surveyed. We'll be moving forward to collecting municipal comparator data. We have employee wage, employee salary and wage data, and certainly the information for council remuneration. We've got a, we have the survey document ready to go. It can be modified through this, through our meeting today. And then we will start to move forward with the data collection. As far as the employee remuneration goes, I have much of the data on file, given work that I've done with other municipalities in 2020. So it's current. And anything else that needs to be gathered, I'd be working with your CIO to gather that information and certainly be working with the library CEO as well on that. The job description writing project is well underway. Your CIO says that they're doing quite well. And so we're very excited to hear that and happy to hear that. And certainly, some of them are completed at the library, and they're just waiting sign off from the CEO. A few more to come in. And that's basically the overview of the project in terms of where we're at today. And we have a lot of work to do over the summer months in order to be moving forward with the completed target date, which is end of August, first part of September.
Well, that was a very comprehensive overview, I must say. Mary Ann Love, I really appreciate that. I agree. I think there's a lot of work ahead of both you, our CIO and staff. And certainly, our members of Council will be engaged in a portion of this as well. So at this point, how about questions from committee? Are there any questions from Council sitting as committee? Beginning with Counselor Hutchinson, please.
Good morning. Yes, Counselor Hutchinson here. Thank you, Mary Ann, for your presentation. Looking forward to the results. Just a couple of questions. One is, when you look at the comparators, I noticed you had Brockton, Gray Highlands, North Wellington. I just wondered why we wouldn't include maybe handover chats, where I know they're, like, just all the surrounding communities that we're competing with, even though I know their population is probably very compared to the others. Is that the reason why they were excluded?
Through you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, that's predominantly it. I'm happy to take a look at their grids, but I think that the, with a smaller population and fewer positions, it's very difficult to get matches. But, you know, it doesn't hurt to take a look at it. I'm more than happy to look at it. You know, to say we have, and it wouldn't be, this would be the time. So we could gather that. But that's predominantly it, it's the size. And the same goes on the other end. If the municipality is way large, it's also get difficult to get position matches. So it's about trying to get the right fit. So, you know, when I see, for example, Collingwood, which is quite a bit larger, it's highly likely that I will not be able to match all jobs. I'll just be matching select, a select number of jobs.
Right, yeah. And I guess with Collingwood, their economics are a little different than Hanover Chatsworth, too. So that's another factor, I'm sure. But I don't know. It's up to, it's up to you people, but I just wondered if that was something we would maybe want to throw in there. And I have one other just mention, and maybe, maybe it's been corrected, but in your meeting or your stats about pay of counselors and so on, the meeting pay rate is not correct on that sheet that you posted there. So it's changed. So I don't know whether that's, you're going to change it or what, you just missed it or whatever.
Well, I probably just missed. So we'll definitely change that. Is it the full day rate and the half-day rate? They're both.
Yeah, yeah, that's different. And you can check with our treasurer, Carrie, and I'm sure she'll correct that for you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. That's it for me.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Hutchinson. Up next is Counselor Townsend, please.
Thank you. Great presentation, and Mary Ann, I appreciate the detail. I'm going to start with the Counselor because it's easier and shorter. I guess the real issue here is that we also noticed if you get online and you do some searches, you can find virtually everyone in Gray County and surrounding data current as to what they're paying and et cetera. And some of them are just doing a straight salary, right? Without a base, without a per diem. Others will have a lower base and a higher per diem, et cetera. So they're easier to compare. But will you be looking at alternatives to the current model? Number one. And number two is, if there are different forms of compensation, like they don't do technology, they do something else. You know, they do a gym pass. That's not what I'm looking for. I'm just saying something different, right? So I'll start with that question.
To respond, yes, definitely. We'll be taking a look at how others pay. And if, if it is, for example, that the prevailing practice is not to work with the meeting per diems, but the prevailing practice is more so with base salary, that would be, that would be reported back with recommendation. So what I have found when I do these reviews across the province, they're all different in terms of pay practice. And it's quite, you know, what I'll be able to pull in, I think, in terms of the data, would be how much the per diem rates would be for meetings. But in terms of the overall payment, that's very that's very difficult to, to compare because of the, how, how information is reported annually. So it's hard to do a, a full comparison. It's more the method of payment and the quantum of payment per meeting that I'd be able to analyze. Any easier analysis on, is on the base pay. But certainly, I'll have a recommendation for council or some options to consider.
Okay. I think you might find that, again, the finance director could assist there, for example, by pulling the average counselor from 2019, et cetera, right? To give you some magnitude issues?
Yes.
Comparators. The other, the other aspect is during our conversations at council, there's often times where there's a concern about how many meetings we have, whether or not we're going to incur significant increase in cost to the, to the municipality. And we don't want to do that, but yet we still need to get the work done. So I think you'll see that there is a, an appetite to go to a base salary where you only, not per diem, where in fact, we're able to do it and not worry about the cost factor, right? So just like you should know that's behind as well. On a, on a different front, I'm still concerned that there's no organizational review steps here. And most importantly, I am, because originally, if you go back to the March, early March council meeting, it was clearly defined that this also included a West Grey services review. And so when I've queried that, that's happening supposedly under the organizational review. So now I'm concerned that, not seeing that in your presentation. And I believe the deadline is September 1, and either you or your CIO can confirm that. And so I'm really trying to understand the true scope of this project because it started a service review with an addition of comp and organizational, and it seems to have gone exactly the opposite way, which I would find very disappointing.
Okay. Hang on a minute to that. I definitely want that clarified. Madam CEO, would you like to address that in terms of scope? Has there been mandate creep or scope creep on this? Or could you just set the record straight, please? And then if necessary, I'll go to our consultant for that.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. And through you to Counselor Townsend. Thank you for the question. Counselor Townsend, I, as I said in the intro, we are going to be capturing operations review through this. And our focus is on the job descriptions, the work that people are doing. We can't lose sight of the fact that there's many, many legislated pieces of work that we have to do. And my goal is to make sure that we're doing them as efficiently and, you know, safely as, as we can. Mary Ann and I have had lengthy conversations about how we capture that. And I'm confident in the experience that she brings to the table, working with municipalities of all sizes, but primarily a lot of municipalities that face the same realities that West Grey does. And Mary Ann, I'd invite you to jump in with, you know, share some of your insights into how we actually are capturing that operational piece.
Yeah, I, I think, thanks. Thank you, Laura. That, that's predominantly it. I mean, sort of trying to build it sort of from job design up. I think when these, when these positions or these projects are out in the marketplace, they'll come out and either as a compensation review with some insight in and around the organization or an org review. And then a compensation review comes later. And this way, and this, this, this request in the marketplace came out with all of it wrapped up. So of course, my quotation has been focused on the job design, the compensation, building that through, and then coming from that observations with regards to efficiencies and effectiveness. So that's how I built the, the, that's how I built the proposal. And that's, that's what I've, I've been retained to do. And I think for an organization of this size, it makes sense. And in terms of me being able to identify gaps in terms of staffing and in terms of maybe some efficiencies that can, that can be gained with regards to moving components of workaround. I think we're going to get to the same place. In terms of process review, like in terms of organizational process and moving things through the organization, that's not what this is. This is more focused on the organization, which is around the fit of jobs and the fit of, of, of work. That's how I took, that's how I took it. And that's how I proposed on it. I'm hoping that helps.
Counselor Townsend?
Okay. Thank you very much for that clarification. My last question has to do with pay equity. And I'm assuming that it's not just a matter of gender. If any other pay equity issues arose, that would also get addressed?
Well, the Pay Equity Act, thanks for that question. The Pay Act was not, I don't get many questions on pay equity from municipalities. So I'm always happy if I got one. Thank you. The Pay Equity Act is focused on gender. That's the legislative checkmark, the compliance checkmark we needing, we're needing to meet. In terms of equity in general, that's also a key element of this review. And that's how jobs fit and how jobs are paid, regardless of whether it's male or female within them. We'll also be looking, and I'll also be looking at any systemic practices that would, would be disingenuous to, to gender or any other, any other identifiable elements as well. But the Pay Equity Act is only gender-based. And it's predominantly looking at the job rates. It can look at some pay practices. The act does talk about making sure that there are no discriminatory or systemically discriminant, systemic pay practices that would contravene the act, what is predominantly pay.
Thank you. Yes, I was hoping that you would say that. I mean, I know the act is primarily gender-based. But I do know that there are, as you say, systemic circumstances from time to time in different organizations. So I'm glad to hear that that's also part of it. And that's what I was driving at. Thank you. And that's all my questions. Thank you.
Very good. Now we're going to move on to Counselor Hergert, then Counselor Hamilton.
Good morning. Thank you very much for the presentation. I was also looking for the word "operations" a little more frequently. I heard you speak of library operations review. But I do appreciate the clarification that we're starting at the job description and moving upward to getting to the efficiency part. So thank you for that. I was curious about performance management. Does that allow for any, like, key performance indicators on senior staff? Or is there any possibility of including some targets and some goals? Or is that more included on their, like, an annual review?
That's a great question. So the performance management, and actually, Laura and I chatted about this a bit yesterday. The performance management program, I think, would be a natural next step once we, we build the compensation elements coming out of this review. If, if there are any efficiencies that I can garner through this review, I can certainly start to introduce those. If not, that's part of a, sort of a secondary piece of work. But typically, it's in the performance management program that we would be putting in the objectives and the competencies required of all positions. And I would typically be introducing competencies that would be different for the senior management groups than other employees. That's a common, it's a common method of working through a program. And then those, and introducing measures and targets on an annual basis that would come through this program. A performance management program can also line up very nicely with business planning and running into the budget cycle. So that site just nicely lines through with budgets, with strat plan, et cetera. So it's certainly important work, but it's not in this review. But this review would, will lay the platform to get you to that work to be done.
So speaking to that, like, once we have this review, then how will we keep up with market demands? Typically, right now, we do a cost of living. You know, so once we establish the, the rates for this year, then would you be providing a way for us to keep up with those annually?
I will. Another great one. Through you, Madam Hergert. I will provide recommendations in terms of how to maintain currency. And I think those recommendations would be great. Would be ideal to put them in a policy statement that would be part of the municipality's salary administration for seniors, right? So that will all come up at the end.
And then one last question is the one-third tax-free. That will be part of your discussion. That would be council used to get one-third of their, their base was tax-free. And so you will be inquiring what other municipalities have done since 2019?
Yep. Yeah. I think it's an important question to ask because it has, you know, I did a lot of work in municipal, with municipal councils in 2018, 2019. It's a precursor to that. Being in effect. And you'll see it, we will see it in, I think, in the base pay.
Okay. There, yeah, that's an area where there is value, but there, you know, it's not any more valued number-wise on paper, but maybe.
Well, the numbers will tell us that story, right? When we, when we pull in the data.
Very good. Thank you very much, Ms. Love.
You're welcome.
Counselor Hamilton, please.
Good morning, Mayor Robinson. And good morning, Mary Ann. Thank you for the, the presentation. So interesting. My ears, my ears tweaked up when I, when I heard you speak about pay equity and how it can raise the floor up. I really liked that language. And on a similar flight path, I'm just, I'm interested in living wage employers. And I note, one of our comparators, North Perth, is a living wage employer. And so just a, a general question about how that might also raise the floor up? And is this, could this be, or is this a consideration in some of your recommendations about pay practices and just your experience in that area?
Oh, that's a great question. Through you, Madam Mayor. Some, and certainly, we can take a look at that. And then we can put that forward for council's consideration. I don't know what the living wage is, so I'll do a bit of investigation and bring that forward. And my experience in the sector is that some organizations have, yes, they've embraced it. And they've embraced the living wage for select positions and identified positions. Or, or if they haven't, if affordability has been an issue, they've put in a practice or, or an initiative to try and move those, or the identified positions closer to the living wage. So certainly can, can take a look at that issue as we work through this, through this review.
Okay. Great. Thank you. And similar to Counselor Hergert's question, just wondering, so you'll have like a maintenance plan moving forward, recommendations? And then I'm just curious about, how often does an organization do this in-depth reviews? Every decade? Or when, when do we do this kind of review like we are today? Or this year?
That's also a good question. I'll give you some recommendations towards the end. But typically, my, my experience in the sector is that the review period, the cycle time is shortening. And there are reasons for that in the municipal sector. They used to be maybe every seven, maybe, maybe five to seven years, there might be a market, external market review. And now it seems to be every three to five. The reasons for that, I think, there's some benefits to that. But I think the fundamental reason for that is the high, is the demographic in the, in the sector, shrinking demographic, tail end of baby boomer. We also have an Omer's pension plan with the number of long-term still-service employees moving through that pension plan and able to retire at a, at a, a younger age, which is nice for them. It's a challenge for employers. So I think that's one thing that's impacting the economics of, of attraction retention and the amounts we have to pay. The other thing that is, is impacting the cycle time is, in addition to the competition piece, is to ensure, because our fiscal dollar is becoming more and more challenged as each year goes on, we want to make sure at council level that we are paying the right amount to the right jobs. We don't want to overpay and we don't want to underpay. Years ago, when we weren't as fiscally strapped, a little bit of latitude was a little more acceptable and could be tolerated. We can't do that anymore. So having a tighter review period is not just the best practice, but it is an evolving practice. So it also, as a byproduct of that, allows, if it's, if it's done once in a term of council, if it can be synced up that way, it allows every member of council to then participate in, in receiving the results of the review and better, with respect, better understanding elements of compensation that are impacting the budget. It's a major impact on operating. So there's a number of positive outputs of that, but the rationale really are the economics in relation to the demographics in municipal government. And, and that's putting pressure on, on pay.
Thank you. And then just lastly, the elements for council review, you've highlighted. And these would be all the elements that you're proposing to examine in the report. Is that correct?
That's right.
Okay. Oh, that's good. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Counselor Shay, please.
Thank you, your worship. And thank you for the introduction to this work that you're doing, Mary Ann. I have a couple of questions. One, I think Counselor Hutchinson mentioned the comparators. And I don't really see how Collingwood and Blue Mountains are good comparators for us. They have, you know, decidedly different economic drivers in their, in those two communities. And in other cases, like our development charges, where we found ourselves comparing to them because they're, you know, regionally, not too far away, that, that they were not, that they were sort of, created a pressure on our own decision-making that was sort of unbalanced. So I would be in favor of removing those two as comparators, if, if you were open to considering that.
Is that a question, Madam Mayor, to me or to council?
I think, go ahead, Jeffrey. Who are you directing the question to?
Well, I, I would like to see those removed. So I would, can I put that forward as a, as a recommendation or a motion or a question? I'm not sure the proper mechanism for doing this.
I'm not, certainly need a, I don't think we need a recommendation on it. And by the way, I do apologize for being less formal with you, Counselor Shay, at that moment. But I think it's a discussion. All right. But I think it's a discussion, all right, let me frame it this way. I guess what I'd be looking for on behalf of committee, based on your question, is a response from our consultant first. I'd also like to hear from our lead on this project and portfolio, being our, our chief administrative officer. So Mary Ann Love, in terms of the, your response for extracting two of those comparators, you know, just your overall response, is a good idea or what's the impact? Could you comment, please?
Sure. Well, respectfully, I would suggest we leave them where they are at this point. I will gather the information and then it may well be that just taking a look at the jobs in West Grey and my inability to match will, will remove them. So I'm already a bit anxious about the Collingwood piece, but I might be able to match a few jobs. When I say a few jobs, it may be the frontline jobs, which are less and less impacted by some of the other elements, or some of the elements that the counselor brought forward. And just as I have my eye on those two, I also would have my, want to take a look at the, at Hanover and Chatsworth that the, the other counselor brought forward. And this is why it's been brought forward as a preliminary list. I find that I'll do my best work and I can provide my best advice to council if the door is open and that I'm able to work with the baseline of comparators. And then basically put forward my case to council in terms of why I felt them to be good comparators after I get through the work. So if council would see fit to let this sort of proceed and let it proceed in this way, I think then I can, I can do my best job for, for the organization.
Madam CIO, in addition, thank you, Mary Ann Love, for that comment.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And yes, thank you, Mary Ann, for, for that clarification. And when we were determining ideal comparators, I also asked Mary Ann to have a look at some municipalities that are doing things differently than West Grey. And if there's any opportunity for us to learn some lessons from that, perhaps they're not a direct comparator, but how, how is their operation functioning? And is there some lessons available to us in the way that we might want to restructure or mirror some of those practices? And the list that we've come up with, I think we've got a great collection of some innovative municipalities that we may be able to align ourselves with or learn from. So if council is comfortable with us proceeding, and as Mary Ann said, we can look at Chatsworth and Hanover as well. But I do agree that the process may just eliminate some of these comparators by design.
So Kelsir Shea?
Okay, good. So that's, that's handy. Like within the, our development charges comparisons that we did, the, the comparators were broken out and it was easy for us to see, you know, where we can, where we on the dollar value, where we compared to, you know, this community, that community, and the other community. And then, you know, a couple were like way off the chart, like Blue Mountains. And, and so we were able to say, well, that's not really a valid comparison. So we will be looking at the results of this comparison, I assume, the same way, and not just seeing aggregates comparisons in terms of salary levels.
I would say yes to that, but I have confirmation from Madam CIO. Mary Ann Love, could you please provide additional comment?
Sure, I can, Madam Mayor. The summary, summary, summary report will show statistical analysis based on job rate comparisons, because this is a salary, salary review. It's not for the purposes of aligning ourselves, say, through development charges or something along those lines. We could put up development charge information, just as we could see, as you could see it on the slide before you. All of that is just an indicator in terms of whether or not we have a relatively concrete set of comparators for the purposes of wages. And as your CIO referenced, there's others, there's a number of criteria for selecting a pool. Some of that is just geographic placement. Do we lose employees to a particular organization because they are so close and we want to understand their pay and see if we can get a little closer to that? Are there, are there practices that some of these organizations have, have undertaken? That, you know, we aspire to or that we are already considering? So it's a little bit different. There will not be, and there hasn't been in the 30-odd years that I've done this work, a solid comparator pool. The issue is, is it, are, it does, are, is the comparator pool robust enough in terms of matching up against the criteria on the previous slide? To give us a general sense that, you know what, the data that's coming from this and the data coming out of the analysis will be job rate-based, maximum rate of pay-based, because it's a salary, it's a, it's a compensation review, right? That we can then say, yeah, based on that, we, we can define our pay market, pay target as X. So by working through the data of the organizations, and I'm quite familiar with Blue Mountains, they're a client. And I'm quite familiar with Brockton, Gray Highlands is a client, Mifred's a client. Every one of these organizations, Clearwater's a client, call every one of these organizations, I've worked their paid, worked with their pay data or done a similar review. So I, I think I'm feeling pretty good about them being on the list. And then what I would say is, is that when I match a position, I use a very conservative, best-fit orientation to the position match. I remove outliers before it ever gets to the summary statistic. And that's the methodology I use as I work through the, the, the project. All right, but no doubt, we may find others and we may find some on here that are not suitable, right? In terms of pay practices, I can say, Blue Mountains actually today is taking a report to their council regarding performance management that lines up beautifully with their business planning models, which are some, I think, some very, you know, front, front-face practices that make sense. And, you know, your CEO of Chadada and I have chatted about that. So, well, well, they're, they're here for a reason. Let's see if it makes sense as they work through.
Okay, okay, thank you. And I'm glad that you're saying that you would remove outliers if you discovered them. So that's really good for me. So another question on the council remuneration, which you said was the thing that you most wanted to talk about today. I, there were a couple of, so we, you have a conference attendance as something for consideration. And I don't know if this is best handled in a remuneration or a compensation review, or if this needs to be sort of considered autonomously by council. But conferences actually include a lot of different sorts of expenses. There's the conference registration, there's travel to the conference, there's meal allowance attending the conference. And we also pay our meeting, our, our regular meeting allowance for days that we're at a conference. So we get the 150-something dollars a day for attending conferences. Other municipalities don't all do that. Some just pay travel, some just, you know, pay registration and travel. So I would like to see the, the conference costs actually broken down and not just, you know, number of conferences that you're allowed to attend. So I'm hoping that that can be part of this review. And as I say, other municipalities have very different practices from the little research that I've been able to do about this. Some just have a, 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 a flat-rate professional development allowance. So, you know, you as a counselor, you have $3,000 a year, you can spend whatever you, you know, whatever you want. If you want to go to a conference, if you want to go to two conferences, if you want to buy a book, if you want to take a course, you know, it just comes out of that. So that's, that's a model that I would like us to possibly consider if we're going to be opening the, the can of worms of looking at conference attendance. Additionally, some, there, we, some of us have opportunities or an interest in participating on external boards. I know our mayor is currently running to, for a position on the AMO board.
Yes.
And I serve on a AMO subcommittee on waste reduction. And we don't currently have a policy on covering, you know, travel or remuneration or anything for that sort of activity. So that's something that I would also like to see rolled into this, if possible.
I, I think those are really interesting and I think forward, forward thinking and so that the research could be done on this. Any comment, Mary Ann? Is this, are you just making notes in terms of additional assessments that could be done?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I think all of those elements are good.
I agree, yeah.
Or I think the key will be how we ask the questions. So I'm going to work with, with the CIO in terms of fine-tuning this survey, because it is what it is. It is a survey. So if the questions aren't asked appropriately, we're not going to get the information that we need. So I'll, I'll take that away. And thank you very much for the, those additions.
Yeah, I think the conference attendance and just the parameters around that, I think, would be interesting to unfold or unpack. Counselor Shea, you still have the mic?
Just one final point. I did read an interesting document produced by AMCTO. That's the Association of Clerk Treasurers, I think, on council remuneration. It was developed in 2017, I think. And I would think that would be an interesting reference document just to, because it frames a lot of the issues around counselor, council remuneration. You know, for example, the fact that a lot of counselors, you know, get into this line of endeavor as a, as a retirement sort of project, and those people don't really need remuneration. And so they, that means the remuneration stays low and that means that younger people who are earlier in their careers are not able to enter into this field because of the, so there's just some general philosophical questions about the, how the remuneration is historically conducted. So I would just encourage you to review that document as you're moving forward with this part of the study.
And Mary Ann, if, yeah, please, I was gonna say, if you didn't have a copy of it, I know we can provide that to you.
If I could respond, I'm very familiar with the report. In fact, I've used it since it's been, since its publication in each one of my council remuneration studies. It provides some context. It's, there's some good data in there. It's, it's geographic in terms of parts of the province, but it does, it does give another benchmark of comparison and some reflection on pay practice. So most definitely familiar with it. I'm glad the counselor has raised it. And I was remiss that I didn't put it in this presentation, but it's certainly my, a go-to for each one of my reports. So you'll, 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 the council will receive some reflections in relation, observations in relation to that report in the summary document that's presented at the end of the project.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Hamilton, please.
Thank you, Mayor Robinson. Just one more question for Mary Ann. In terms of the comparators, will these be the same comparators that would be used for when we move on to organizational structure review or finding efficiencies? And the only reason I'm asking that, it makes a lot of sense to me that we have a regional approach in terms of when we're looking at job description, competition, pay, that makes sense. In terms of looking for innovative practices, I was wondering if we'd be going outside of the region with, within other regions of the province, looking for those innovations?
Shall I respond, Madam Mayor?
Oh, absolutely. I'm anticipating your response.
Well, I think wonderful ideas, but I am limited by scope of this review. I really am limited. So you have some, I, I certainly have some, my work in the sector, which has been many, many years, and my work is predominantly municipal. So I have a, a very, you know, I have a, a good understanding in terms of what some best practices are that I would be, and I would be bringing those forward and recommendations, whether those are based on communications or processes. And certainly, we've talked about some of them now in terms of lining up performance goals, competencies, business planning, budget, strategic plan. And that is a heavy level of work, but that's certainly, I mean, I think there's a lot to be gained from that initiative coming out. So that would be one of the recommendations. In terms of taking a look at the comparator group, I think that there will be a subset of this group, not all of it, but a subset that would be helpful for us to know what the position complement is. How many full-time, part-time, contract staff are being, are required in their organizations to deliver their services? I think that's important information and we'd want to be able to pull that in, not from all, but from some. And I'll be working with the CIO in terms of gathering that, right?
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. I think at this point, Mary Ann Love, I want to thank you very much for the comprehensive introduction, presentation for, for this review. I know we've been all anticipating it, so we're looking forward to the results and how, how it all fits in, into West Grey. So very much appreciate this presentation and I know we'll be speaking again at Committee of the Hall and Council for sure. Madam Clerk, would you mind reading the recommendation? And then I'd be looking for a mover and a seconder.
Through you, Your Worship. The recommendation is that Committee of the Hall receive the 2020 organizational and compensation review presentation by Mary Ann Love, ML Consulting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a mover for this motion? Counselor Townsend?
Counselor Townsend, I will move that motion.
Thank you. Counselor Hutchinson, are you seconding the motion?
Yes, Counsel Hutchinson seconds the motion.
Questions or comments on the motion? Seeing none? All those in favor, please signify with a check mark. Those not in favor, please signify with the next mark. I will begin. Mayor Christine Robinson, I am in favor of this motion. Counselor Hutchinson, state your name and how you are voting.
Counselor Hutchinson, in favor.
Counselor Hamilton, state your name and how you are voting.
Counselor Hamilton, yes.
Deputy Mayor Hutchinson, state your name and how you are voting.
Deputy Mayor Hutchinson, in favor.
Counselor Shea, state your name and how you are voting.
Counselor Shea, yes.
Counselor Hergert, state your name and how you are voting.
Counselor Hergert, yes.
Counselor Townsend, state your name and how you are voting.
Counselor Townsend, in favor.
Motion does carry. Thank you, Mary Ann, for the great presentation. We'll see you again. We are going to move on to item four, which is delegation. Before I call that one, I just want to mention that this is our first meeting, members of council sitting as committee and those listening in. This is our first meeting using eScribe. So that is a collaboration, an integration of the agenda, the minutes, and of course, the recording of this meeting. So I just want to mention, there may just be a slight delay when we, we unmute someone. So just bear with us on that. Really looking forward to this modernization approach to decision-making, if you will, and the administration that supports it. Okay, item four, delegations. We have one listed as 4.1. Mr. D. Carter, Canadian Hemp Farmers Alliance, Federal Provincial and Municipal Sustainable Development. I did note that Mr. Carter was on here through the dashboard. Welcome, Mr. Carter, and we're, we're listening to your delegation at this point.
Hey, guys, are you guys able to hear me?
We're just able to hear you now. Welcome. And we're looking forward to your presentation. Please proceed.
Perfect. Thank you for having me, guys. And this is the Canadian Hemp Farmers Alliance, Federal Provincial and Municipal Sustainable Development Strategy Plan on how we can adopt functional hemp-based products into the Canadian Federal Provincial and Municipal Sustainable Development Strategies, and as well how we can make this a mandate within the federal provincial and municipal government sustainable development plans. Next slide, please. So pretty much the Canadian Hemp Farmers Alliance mission is to tackle the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals by working with other processors and formulators that can help develop functional hemp-based products that can help to reduce our need on further investing into environmentally unfriendly projects like fracking for fossil fuels, mining, and as well deforestation, which a lot of these products are being used for one-use products, which we can start using a more alternative sustainable product, which is hemp. Right now, I'm currently trying to raise $3 million so that I can conduct research and development, which I can conduct with academia and connect that with commercialized companies so that we can get this product out to market as soon as possible. Things such as bioplastics, pulp and paper, liquid fuels, energy pellets, batteries, automobile parts, building materials, textile fabrics, and as well soil remediation mulch. So those materials are all going to be used from hemp and we're looking to have those commercialized here within Canada and as well expand this into global markets so that we can maximize our efforts to tackle the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals. Next slide, please. So for those who don't know, I'm sure all of you do know, but this is the, or this is the Sustainable Development Goals essentially brought down by the United Nations. And right now, I have done a survey and we can tackle within hemp 16 of the 17 goals. I'm not going to name them all out, but you can see them there on the screen. And like no poverty, hemp can help with creating new jobs, zero hunger can provide nutritional foods, and that goes into sustainable goal three as well. But as you can see, this product can essentially tackle every single goal brought down by the international governments. And we're just looking to have this become a mandate within the provincial, municipal, and federal governments. Next slide, please. So here are just a few examples on how we can adopt functional hemp-based products into the Canadian Federal Provincial Municipal Sustainable Development Strategies is by opening up and essentially opening up government procurements. That will be the purchasers from the formulation companies. Essentially what they're doing within the recreational cannabis space with the provincial governments, with the Ontario OCS system, which they're currently being the wholesale purchasers for the processors and formulators and essentially selling it into the retail stores where the consumers can then buy it. So we're looking And formulators and essentially selling it into the retail stores where the consumers can then buy it. So we're looking for this sort of. Backing and support and mandate within all levels of government. And as well ways, once all that is developed and the products are developed, we're looking for procurement opportunities for your governments and all departments. Start purchasing functional hemp based products and that could be things like toilet paper, photocopying paper, tissue paper, paper towels. Hemp bioplastic cutlery, plates, bowls, straws, tablecloths. Hemp fiber uniforms and as well PPE products. Hemp fiber for new insulation building development projects. And as well hemp supercapacitor batteries for all government and public automobiles that are electrically powered. So right now I'm seeing within the Canadian governments. They're looking to see how we can essentially get a cleaner transit coming in the near future using electrically powered. Automobiles, electrically powered bicycles and scooters, and we're looking to see if your. Organization, we know that you guys are going to allow companies to bring those types of products into your municipal governments. We are looking to see if your company can encourage these companies to connect with sustainable functional hemp based products. That they can then, you know, start using their batteries and start using a hemp supercapacitor, which is very sustainable. It's biodegradable and it won't create any environmental harm at the end of the day, once it is essentially dead and it can't be used in. So by having the Canadian federal provincial municipal governments adopting functional hemp based materials. Into their sustainable development plans, this will help to reduce the global market need. For things like fracking for fossil fuels, mining and as well tree deforestation, which is usually being used at the end of the day for one use products. This will encourage other corporations to adopt functional hemp based products into their sustainable development strategies. As well, this will encourage agricultural growth and give the formulators, processors and farmers. The ability to work out a healthy profit sharing contract. Which will allow for farmer, processor and formulator to expand at the same rate, which will create millions of jobs in the process. To tackle the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals. Next slide, please. So just some jobs here that would be created if we start opening up procurement opportunities and encouraging this crop to be grown, essentially how we had it in the early 1900s. When it was actually a mandate within Canada and through parts of North America to be grown, essentially before. World wars, but we need to start using this product in other aspects, more sustainable routes. And we need to start making this a mandated crop for farmers to use as a rotational crop and these are jobs that can be created through. Governments, research and developers, processors, product formulators, agricultural farmers. Marketing and sales and as well new business owners that can get involved and as well this will open new demographic business owners. For demographics such as women, youth and indigenous. Our next slide, please. So through reading the Canadian. I guess CO2 emission output report there. In 2018, Canada emitted 1.5 trillion pounds of CO2 emissions through all major industries within Canada. Right now, one acre hemp sequesters 20,000 pounds of CO2 emissions and this is a test done from a company in Poland. So based off that, we would need to grow 77.5 million acres just in one year. To become completely carbon neutral of the year 2018 of all the output that was put out. Right now, Canada has 232 million acres of agricultural farmland that can be used for cultivation. And as well for a mandated crop rotation within hemp. So this is where we can start mandating hemp to be grown as a crop rotation, which would, you know. Hugely increase the sustainable aspects and the carbon sequestration. Just if Canada was grow one third of all Canada's farmland for one year, this would sequester 100% of all CO2 emissions. If Canada grew just 30 million acres per year between the years 2020 to 2025, that would sequester 100%. If Canada grew 14 million acres between, sorry, every year between the years 2020 to 2030, that would sequester 100%. And if we grew 5 million acres each year between the years 2020 to 2050, this would sequester 100% of the CO2 emissions. And Canada currently is only growing 150,000 acres of industrial hemp. Which is contributing to 3 billion pounds of CO2 sequestration. So just having this as a mandated prop to grow, we can definitely move. The carbon sequestration up and essentially provide farmers, processors, formulators with carbon credits. Encouragement to start growing this product. Our next slide, please. And yeah, that's essentially the end of the presentation. It was a quick and sweet one there, but we're essentially looking for the levels of government. Starting with municipal governments and raising your voice at all levels and at meetings. To encourage hemp to be brought into a mandate and as well bring investment and procurement opportunities for the industry because we know that hemp is the most sustainable prop right now. In the plant kingdom and it's a it can grow in abundance, so why not use it? It's great for the environment. It helps reduce the need on fracking to fossil fuels. Mining and as well tree deforestation for one use products. That's everything. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you very much, Dan Carter, for the presentation. Very much appreciate it. The detail on the presentation, but just working guiding us through. The goal with regard to this type of product. Dan, what have you done to this point? In terms of the outreach to our our other orders of government for the provincial federal government?
Yeah, so I'm essentially on a Canadian line wide campaign where I'm going through delegation meetings within municipal federal and provincial governments, essentially. Proposing having this become a mandate. So essentially, yeah, I'm on road to be going through all Canada's departments right now, so. Any effort through your company or your organization here, that would be greatly helpful and I know that, you know, if we band together and work together, I know that hemp can become a mandate again back. As it was back in the 1900s and early 1900s.
And before I I see we're developing a speaker's list here, but what challenges have you come across when you're trying to move this along?
So the only hindrance right now is just the lack of processing and formulation to actually have some of these products. And projects and ideas and visions that I have right now to move forward. But I know it's all capable because, you know, technology is being developed for all types of major industries right now. And we know that hemp can, you know, be just right up there with all those industries as well, so. That's the main kind of bottleneck within all the conversations is there isn't enough processing and formulation there in the market to. Purchase this product at the moment, but we need to open those industries, so. Instead of forcing the product out, we're actually creating a vacuum effect and and pulling it into the markets because it's in a mandate. Corporations will, you know, soon adopt these functional hemp based products, restaurants will adopt. Cutlerys, takeout containers, the cannabis space will adopt, you know, sustainable renewable, biodegradable, you know, cannabis containers for all the industry. So I think that this is a great opportunity and within Corona or COVID right now, this is a great chance for. Industries and governments all come together and really brainstorm the future on sustainability and I think that hemp should definitely be a part of that.
Great, thank you very much for that. Questions now, we're beginning with Councillor Hutchinson.
Yeah, good morning. It's Councillor Hutchinson here. Dan, interesting, interesting presentation. I thought it was sort of interesting that. I can remember reading articles and actually I'm a teacher in background, my background's in teaching and retired now, but. But I can remember 20, 25 years ago that I came across articles and I I actually taught this to my students as a sustainable. You know, product for the future that can solve a lot of our issues. That's interesting that. Time has gone by and haven't really seen a whole lot and all you see a few items of clothing and whatnot, but really hasn't been a whole lot uptake on it. I'm sort of curious why that is. You know, why haven't we had more agricultural farmers growing crops? And, you know, is it because of the the bad rap that goes along with cannabis and and the marijuana thing that we're just sort of getting a handle on? I just thought it was it was interesting. I do think there's a lot of potential here and maybe the timing is right, so. Thanks for bringing this forward and hopefully we can we'll see a change in the near future.
Yeah, for sure. I definitely agree and kind of the bottleneck there again is. There is that stigma being related with cannabis and essentially health Canada has kind of butchered. How they put hemp under the Cannabis Act regulation when they're actually completely different kinds of makeup plants, but they do provide that fiber. So essentially, we're not seeing enough research and development incentive for governments to urge this to be, you know. Prop that can be, you know, easy enough to get the money because there is no investment right now. Banks aren't investing into this where, you know, major industries within metal. They're all getting that investment to do their own research and development fairly easy, but a lot of the banks. You know, funding within this industry right now, so it's creating bottleneck, so.
Right.
Incentive and more encouragement, I think a mandate within hemp would be perfect.
Yeah, well, that's that's great. Hope hopefully we can continue to push this because I think there is a lot of potential there and. And, you know, we we need to, we need to make some changes and hopefully some companies will jump on board and given that. You know, with environmental pollution problems and so on, so. So good luck and hopefully we can support and support this going forward. Thank you.
Great, and you know, maybe this is something that when our sustainability committee is. Is organized, I think this is a potential for this and maybe even economic development. Councillor Hutchinson, quite frankly, there may be. Some interesting knowledge to be gained on this. Anyway, food for thought, as it were. I do have another member of council that wishes to speak. Councillor Hergert, please.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. I was curious what the Ontario Federation of Agriculture and or specifically the Gray County Federation of Agriculture. Are they supportive of this? I I'm a little surprised that mandating a specific crop. On a private farm would be something that we're that we're entertaining, so maybe shine a little light for me how how that's our purview.
Yeah, so I haven't asked a question within the federal board there with agriculture. They are interested within hemp. As far as I know, they. They're not at the moment, just because it does have that stigma. But yeah, just looking to see how we can move this forward within, you know, mandated governments. And being eaten, grown, being processed, being researched and developed on formulated and functional consumer products. So we think it's a lot more sustainable and healthier than a lot of the products and crops being grown right now. Within the Canadian government's federal board, so. Yeah, just see how we can move this forward.
So I guess I'm curious, what are you asking from us?
So right now, essentially what my needs and wants are at this exact moment would just be more encouragement for investments. As well for all governments to open up procurement opportunities. To be the purchasers of this product, essentially how the provincial government has opened that cannabis recreational procurement opportunity. And as well just to help move this into the federal mandate, so investment mandate and procurement.
Okay, if I could just ask one last question, how many acres have you planted this year of hemp?
We have 100 acres of hemp personally, but right now within the cooperative organization, there's a little over 5,000 acres, so that's real all of Canada. So that's why we need to have more processing and formulation available because right now. Processors can only withstand and take maybe 100 acres to 200 acres per year. Which, you know, this isn't allowing any of the farmers to kind of get involved in the industry. A lot of them are just growing for sheer passion of the crop, so. We need more investments and then we can then open up these processing facilities and purchase this equipment because private investment alone. Family and friends and personal investment just is quite enough to move an industry forward with such a sustainable prop like this.
So I just have one last comment then. Gray County has an agriculture part of economic development and I would encourage you to reach out to them as well. Philly Markowitz is right on top of agriculture and economic development. I think she might be a really good touch point for you.
Perfect, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Good, and also I'm very proud and pleased to say that Gray County Gray County has just approved an agriculture advisory committee. Terms of reference are being worked on. That may also be another potential there. So thank you very much, members of committee. Madam Cao, would you read the recommendation and we'll see if there's a mover and seconder for it, please? Oh, not Madam Cao, pardon me, I'm getting so used to that. We I have to adjust myself as well and thank you, Madam Clerk. Could you please read the recommendation?
Thank you through you, your worship. The recommendation is that Committee of the Hall receive the delegation of Mr. Carter from Canadian Hemp Farmers Alliance regarding a sustainable development plan.
Councillor, I see your hand up. Are you moving the motion? I normally operate on the the check marks, but I I see your hand there. It's okay.
Or do we have a plan? It says regarding a sustainable development plan. This is his plan and we're just receiving the delegation, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I will move that, yep.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Hutchinson, are you seconding this motion?
Hi, Deputy Mayor Hutchinson here. Yes, I will second the motion, Mayor.
Questions or comments? Seeing none? On the motion, all those in favor, please signify with a check mark. Those not in favor, with the next mark. I will begin. Mayor Christine Robinson, I am in favor of the motion before us. Councillor Townsend, state your name and how you are voting.
Councillor Townsend, in favor.
Councillor Hergert, state your name and how you are voting.
Councillor Hergert, yes.
Councillor Shea, state your name and how you are voting.
Councillor Shea, yes.
Deputy Mayor Hutchinson, state your name and how you are voting.
Deputy Mayor Hutchinson, in favor.
Councillor Hamilton, state your name and how you are voting.
Councillor Hamilton, yes.
Councillor Hutchinson, state your name and how you are voting.
Councillor Hutchinson, in favor.
Motion does carry. Thank you very much, Mr. Dan Carter, for your presentation. We we are now moving on to item five, business arising from the previous meeting. First, I need to clear my dashboard. Here we go. Madam Clerk, is there any business arising from the previous meeting?
Through you, your worship. I've received no notice of any business arising from the previous meeting. Thank you.
Members of committee. Seeing none. We are now going to move on to staff reports of which we have. We have four, beginning with item six, staff report 6.1 Recreation, West Gray Alcohol Policy. Supervisor Hewlett, will you be presenting at this point?
Yes, I will be presenting, however. Our Director of Finance and Treasure will be taking over the meeting and I'm needing to just while I present my report.
Okay, before we go any further, please excuse me for the interruption. Councillor Hutchinson, you have your hand up.
Yes, yes, I'm just wondering if it'd be a good time to take a break because I think.
I wondered, yes. Would 10 minutes suffice? Let's let's go with that. That great, great point to do this. We'll be back in 10 minutes. We're just going to. We're not going to research, we're going to recess. Thank you very much. Well, welcome back, everyone. Thank you. I think we all needed that bit of a break, but we have returned from recess. Could everyone please clear their dashboard? And I'm going to ask the question. All members of council, if you are present, please indicate with a check mark. We have everybody present. Thank you. If you could clear your dashboard, very much appreciate that. We have all members of committee present and staff are ready to go as well, so let's continue on. As we were just before the recess, item six, staff reports, we're dealing with 6.1 Recreation, West Gray Alcohol Policy. Supervisor Hewlett, your presentation, please.
Good morning, your worship, members of council. So the report in front of you outlines the new updated municipal alcohol policy since the last time we met. I went through a whole overhaul of the policy. And as well looked into the licensing of our facilities, which you'll see outlined in the report. Just two changes to note that were pointed out. To me via correspondence through council, under section 2.3 of the new alcohol policy, the tickets, the ticket sales. It states 30 minutes. It's supposed to be 15 minutes. As well as under 6.3 and appendix C, the Sunjan Clause is three. the sun gen clause is three years, not one years as outlined. Um, so that will be edited and fixed prior to the policy being formalized. Other than that, I am open to any questions or comments from council.
Before I go there to the members of committee, Madam CIO, is there anything you wish to, um, uh, speak further on in terms of the consultation with, uh, other areas? Um, and the follow-up to, uh, the questions that were asked, uh, from our last time we had this item before us? And I do appreciate Supervisor Hewlett's presentation as far. Okay. All right. And that's fine. Um, we'll, we'll wait for the questions of, um, committee. And I would ask, I, in your audio, I think you're gonna have to speak closer to your mic. Uh, thank you very much for that. Members of committee, questions?
And if I may, before I move on, Madam Mayor, um, this policy, after it was adapted, it was vetted through our insurance broker, our insurance, um, provider, as well as their legal team and their risk management team. So there's been many, um, legal and legislative eyes on it and they have approved the policy as written, um, just for the background of council.
Uh, we appreciate that. Thank you very much. We've just got a small speaker list at this point. Councillor Hutchinson and then Councillor Townsend.
Yeah, good morning. Councillor Hutchinson here. So, um, I have a few points I wanted to bring, point out, um, regarding this. First of all, it starts out in the executive summary, says staff completed research regarding the municipality licensing its facilities and recommend status quo, uh, leaving with the renter. So, that's fine. We did some research, but I, I believe when we had this discussion before, it was very lengthy discussion, we had asked for, um, public, um, survey and, and, um, communication with the public. And seeing that we, we are gonna have a communications or, uh, yeah, communications presentation later on by, um, our communications staff, I'm just wondering, I don't, I don't think we've really done, uh, due diligence in terms of communication with our, um, uh, area, with our residents. So I, I would like to see us defer this until we have done that. I realize that we, um, you know, we're coming from the legal end of it and, uh, the liability, but there are a number of things out there that, um, would, um, that I would like to see in terms of changes on this. So, so that would be my number one suggestion is I would like to see us defer this and, get more public input. Because we have a lot of users and I think if we, if we pass this and come down on like sort of heavy-handed, I, I think we're gonna lose a lot of users in this, you know, of our facilities. Um, so that would be, uh, my suggestion. I'm just looking for a couple of items here I wanted to mention. One being, uh, if you look on page, um, 34 in our agenda and it's number, uh, well, page eight in the policy, that's about, um, designation of properties, events and rules. I'm just curious why it talks about in Eaton, it talks about the, um, Eaton Centennial Hall, it's got banquet hall, boardroom, pavilion, ball dim- diamond grounds. But in Durham, it doesn't mention anything about the ball diamonds. So I'm not sure why that's not included in there. That would be my first question. Does someone like to respond to that?
Yes, we will absolutely have somebody respond and that will be Supervisor Hewlett, please.
Through you, Madam Mayor. Sorry, Councillor Hutchinson, you were referring to the Durham and, uh, ball diamonds?
Yes.
Those are listed under the Durham and District Community Centre. It'll be about halfway down that designation of properties chart.
No, it's not mine.
Thirty-one of the agenda.
What page?
Thirty-one of the agenda, page eight of the report.
It's thirty-one.
It's under section 2.1, the chart where it outlines all of the facilities.
So Supervisor Hewlett, why the difference if, uh, for ball, uh, diamonds versus diamond grounds?
The, uh, ball diamonds and diamond grounds, um, are essentially the same thing.
Oh, you're just using two different titles. Okay. Ca- uh, Councillor Hutchinson, you still have the mic.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not seeing it at all, but, um,
Okay.
Say page thirty-one. What page on the, on the, of the, oh, thirty-one of the agenda page?
Yeah, I'm looking at, um, page thirty-one of the agenda page, uh, which is page, if you will, page eight of the, um, pol- draft policy. And there's the header of section two, designation of properties, events and roles, 2.1 designation of properties. And then there's a, a chart, but there is a, a difference between ball diamonds and ball grounds. Interesting.
Yeah, and I don't, my chart, uh, cuts off after Durham District Community Centre Boardroom. There's not, nothing below that on page eight. So I don't know if that's better or there's something wrong there, but.
Madam CIO, is that something that we could, um, email, uh, the councillor, this report? I'd, I'd like him to have the full report. Or, um, okay, clerk, uh, if you could just speak into the mic, Clerk Sherbeck, that would be great as a, uh, assistance.
Thank you. Through you, your worship. Uh, it may be easier if you access the council package on our website. And you'll see that on the agenda, on the HTML version of the agenda, you can click on, um, the Recreation Manager's Report and it will go directly to the report rather than scrolling through a large PDF document. That might be the quickest way to get directly to the report. Does that help?
Yeah, I can, I can do that at a later date. That's fine. Um, I just, I just was curious why that was. So if it's in there, that's, that's okay. My other comment under, um, special occasion permits under 2.2 designation of events, this is, this is an area that, uh, again, where we could maybe have some public input and, uh, talks about, um, specialized, you can't, special occasion permits, you can't advertise, no public advertising, social media, so on. And then that's fine. That's, that's been happening. That's been out there. I'm not so sure if people abide by the social media one, but anyways, it says no intent for gain or profit from the sale of alcohol at advance. How does that really work with our buck and doughs? Because that's really the whole intent of having a buck and dough.
Supervisor Hewlett? Good question, councillor.
My apologies, my apologies for the delay there. Um, I was trying to pull my participant list back up.
Thank you.
You'll see the agenda on your screen again. Um, yes, as, um, Clerk Sherbeck had made mention to, it is, um, technically illegal through the AGCO to make, um, profit off of the sale of alcohol. So the full intent of the buck and dough is, according to policy, not supposed to be to make profit off of the sale of alcohol. Majority of the profit is supposed to be off of tickets, um, other games that are happening. The full intent of a buck and dough is not to be of alcohol. Um, but ultimately that falls in the hands of the renter, but according to our policy as outlined, they are not to make profit off of alcohol, technically.
Appreciate all your questions, Councillor Hutchinson, because we, uh, we need to have all the responses. So, um, very good. Please proceed.
Yeah. Okay. So, and again, that's just a couple of bullets down. It says absolutely no games of chance, uh, uh, when our skills permit. Like, I mean, there's all kinds of games that go on during the, the buck and doughs, which, which are there to create, um, generate profits. But anyways, my, my, my thoughts are, uh, you know, if we make it too stringent, we're gonna lose business and, and that's my concern with this whole policy is, is, uh, we have facilities now that aren't being used enough. And now we're, if we start coming down with all these rules and regulations that, uh, defeat to a purpose, defeat people trying to rent our facilities, then we might as well just close the doors. Anyways, the other, the other comment is under ticket seller criteria and responsibility. That's in the middle there, it says only sells a maximum of four tickets per patron at one time. Well, if you've ever been to, uh, a stag, a buck and dough or to a TCAT game or whatever, it just makes sense that you buy five tickets, which are usually the beer is $4. You buy five tickets for $20. And then you don't have all this change business going on. So I'm not sure why we're putting in there four tickets now when they, the average is five and then it's, you know, then it makes it simple. So, uh, like again, I don't wanna make things complicated for people and, and, and so I'm not sure why we come up with four tickets, uh, at one time.
Let's see if we can get a response to both of those questions you've had, uh, or in comments. Supervisor Hewlett, please.
To answer both of those questions, quite simply, it's legislated and we have no control over it. Both through the AGCO, we are technically not permitted to sell more than four tickets at a time. Um, and that was the most recent legislative change, um, that came down the pipeline in late 2019, when I had originally first tried to amend the policy.
Okay, so that's another thing that, uh, when we go to our public that we need to clarify because otherwise, um, our ticket sellers are breaking that rule every time they, they sell tickets. So, uh, we definitely need to make sure people know that. And we did have the talk, we did have this discussion about, uh, wristbands and, and, um, and so under door mon- door monitor criteria responsibilities, we're saying that we, we want, uh, that, uh, age majority patrons are clearly marked using non-removable colored wristbands like Tyvek's wristbands if there were youth in attendance on the event. So, um, we did talk about that. We thought that that was, you know, just created more garbage and should that, we do it that way. So, that's another item that we need to definitely, um, put out there if we're gonna go that route. And it's exactly, it's not exactly what we were hoping for in terms of our, um, our environmental policy sort of thing. So, um, and, yeah, so there's the thing. So I think maybe, uh, I'm glad to see that we have cans in there. That was one of the things that we did talk about, that, uh, we're now allowing people to use cans because, um, and getting away from the plastic cups. And that was the other thing that, uh, we, well, talked about. And one other thing under page, uh, safe environment, four de- four des- four decimal two, which is page forty-one of the agenda, uh, talks about, uh, special occasion permit, tailgate events are not permitted on municipal premises. So even though our province is sort of promoting tailgate parties to happen, uh, with some reg- with some stipulations, we're saying no to that, uh, according to our policy. Um, I just wondered, things seem to be, um, becoming more flexible and yet we seem to be going the other way, uh, making it more stringent. So, um, I think I'll leave it there for now. I just, I have some concerns with this and my, my suggestion would be I'd like to see us defer this until we have more public input and to discuss with our public about, um, how we can make it work so that they're still gonna rent our facilities. And when I think and look at the hockey aspect of it too, they're gonna rent our facilities, but, um, making it work for both parties, considering the liability issues. I, I understand that. Uh, I'll leave it there for now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I have an indication from Supervisor Hewlett that he'd like to respond to a couple of those things. And thank you very much, Councillor Hutchinson.
Uh, thank you for your questions and concerns, councillor. Um, the three main, uh, points that I just pulled, um, from the conversation that we just had, were wristbands, tailgating and public input. Um, to answer your question firstly about the wristbands, I understand your concern about why we would only want to put a wristband, um, for example, on the youth who are underage attending the event in order to mitigate any garbage or having to put wristbands on all of, um, the adults who are attending the event who are over the age of majority. With that being said, um, I can almost guarantee you if we were to put a wristband on a youth and say, okay, if, well, you're wearing this wristband, um, you are not able to get drinks at the bar, the youth would pull that wristband off. However, if I give it to an adult and say, in order to grab a drink at the bar, you need to wear this wristband, adults will most likely keep it on. However, with that, I did do some research and I did find a, um, they're not a Tyvek's branded band, however, they are similar and they cannot be ripped off easily and they are 95% compostable. So that is something I am prepared to purchase and provide to renters in the event that we have youth attending an event. So that will help to limit our, um, waste from our events as well as allow, um, the processes in place that are best recommended by public health. In regards to tailgating, um, yes, the province is loosening guidelines on tailgating and allowing it to happen, um, on other properties than we had primarily seen it before. However, in recommendations from public health as well as our insurance agency, they are recommending that we not allow tailgating on our municipal properties. For the public input, um, I know it was the recommendation of council to go out, um, for public input in adapting the municipal alcohol policy. However, from my background, um, I would not recommend going out to the public and saying, how would you like us to create a policy? My recommendation would be going out after the fact and saying, okay, we've created this policy. This is how you put it into place and this is how you best rent our facilities. So once we adapt this, sorry, adopt this policy as well as create our special events guide, I would, um, put forward that we host, um, some sort of town hall session, session, inviting all of our main user groups and really any renters who would like to rent our facilities and bring them in and say, okay, this is the best way to go about renting our facilities. And I think that's kind of our best foot moving forward because, um, there, we wouldn't get much out of a meeting where we bring people in and say, how would you like to follow the rules? We bring them in and say, okay, this is how we're gonna move forward and this is how you best rent our facilities.
Thank you. Uh, Councillor Hutchinson, I still see your hand up. You still have the mic unless you say you are complete. Anything further?
Sorry, yeah, I'd just like to, to comment on that. So, so thank you for the, the input there, Cody. My, my thoughts would be, I would sooner say, go out to the public, whether it be in the form of a survey or contacting some of our main users and saying, we're working on a policy, uh, regarding, reviewing our policy about alcohol use in our facilities. We'd like your input, rather than going out to them and saying, we have a policy that we, we've made it here now and these are the rules and you must follow them. I want, I want to have us, we talk about communication and communication with our public. I wanna go to them first and say, we're working on something here and, uh, we would like your input and how do you see this working for you? And if you're breaking some of the rules now, which we obviously know there are, um, how is this going to work? And then we'll try to make that work so that it's benefit for both groups. So that would be my suggestion as we go about that in a little different manner.
Thank you very much for that. Before I go to Councillor Townsend, Madam CIO.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and, and thank you councillor for the conversation. My only concern about going out before the policy is adopted is we're asking the public for input on a policy where we are mandated by other bodies and of government that we simply can't, we can't, there's a lot in this policy that is non-negotiable. So it would be a little bit, um, difficult to have public input on things that we can't control even ourselves. Um, I support, um, Supervisor Hewlett's recommendation that this policy has been adopted by council. Let's work with it. It, it can always be revised in the areas that we can control, but until we actually put it into play, we, you know, we're putting our best advice forward and, you know, we'll see what comes out of it, but, but public, we're not afraid of public consultation. In fact, we encourage that. But it, it, it just seems a little disingenuous to ask people to comment on something that we don't have the entire control over.
Thank you very much. Councillor Townsend, please.
Yeah, Councillor Townsend, thank you. Um, I'm gonna continue the conversation on the, um, the garnering input from users in, at the April 28th cow, it was, uh, recommended by council that happens. And I'm looking at it a different way. I'm looking at sending it to all the people that rent and the people that don't, service groups, not-for-profits, whatever, as to why they don't and what they like and what they don't like or what they find challenging. You know, the wording can be, uh, more positive than negative, but the argument is not to ask them what they think of the legislation or what they think of this. And that's what's gonna happen if we send it out after the fact. It's more saying, you know, what are your challenges to use? Why don't you use? Why do you use? What do you like about it? And from that, we can then look at ourselves, not them. They're not gonna tell us what the policy looks like, but they are telling us where our challenges are. And we can respond to a survey like that, very simple by saying, these are the things we can control, these are the things we can't control, but by the same token, we're actually gonna present to them some potential changes that will address some of those concerns. If we don't do that, I agree with Councillor Hutchinson that we may get some kickback or we may lose some renters from it. And I'd really not like to see that. And I'd really not like to see that. I do know there are service groups that won't use our facilities because they claim they're too expensive alone. So it doesn't matter what the policy says, they won't use it. But at least you hear that, you hear why. Others may be something that's within our control and we asked beforehand. And I think that was the point of the request in April. So I'll just leave that with you for consideration, but I just thought I should clarify the point because I did have it on my uh my list of questions as well.
Well, thank you councillor Townsend, and I do have an indication that supervisor Hewlett would like to speak. Please go ahead.
Uh thank you for your question, councillor, and if I may respond. In creating this policy, it wasn't just created by myself as well as um our leaders from the Alcohol Gaming Commission as well as public health and our insurance company. There was also very at length conversations with um both Madam CIO as well as our two facility managers who, in my opinion, have a huge extensive knowledge of how our facilities are used by our renters. So even going to them and getting their input, um I felt as though we were also getting in a roundabout way, getting input from our renters as well, uh because even the policy was adapted before it went to our insurance agency, um they had input into the policy and how it was written to best reflect how our renters use the facilities. Um and between Randy and Tom, both of our facility managers, they have a vastly extensive knowledge. And they were saying, hey, what about this? This user group does this and that sort of thing. So all of that was taken into account when writing this policy, so.
Okay, well, thank you. What I'm hearing, and and we still have a bit of a speakers list, but what I'm hearing this far from from the committees that have spoken is that they're still looking for feedback. And I'm wondering if, and we do um think it's important for recreational um aspects, uh food for thought in terms of um receiving feedback on this particular report. I I think that that has merit in in terms of what councillor Hutchinson is speaking about a deferral to garner that type of information. Perhaps uh this report is sent out to various organizations, obtaining some feedback and it's it's um compiled, that was the word I was searching for, and and then brought back uh for for additional uh discussion. Um anyway, food for thought on that. Councillor Townsend, you still have the mic. We have councillor Shay and then Deputy Mayor Hutchinson.
Okay, thank you. Um I'd like to go to section four point two uh as well. The third and fourth bullets refer to bottles only. They don't define whether it's glass or plastic, and yet we have different policies and different situations for each. So I'm recommending that uh bottle shouldn't just be used on its own. There should be plastic um or glass or all, i- if it does have all and therefore it's very clear to the reader.
Okay.
Moving on to section six point one, uh it says that the the um person holding the event is to inform the municipality if any repairs or other actions are required. And I wasn't sure in what context, whether it was before, during, after, all the above kind of events. And um I think if you say something goes wrong during the event, I'm assuming staff's available to deal with it. Or is it strictly just before and after? So if you're putting an obligation on the event holder, I think they need to understand when and how they need to do that. Section six point two and three, we use infraction and violation. Is there a difference? Should we standardize on one word? And again, is clarity for the um the event holder or the person that is responsible for enforcing to understand the clarity and and similar to the chart that had um diamond, or what was it, grounds versus ballpark grounds versus um ball diamond? I think it's clear that we need to be consistent in our terminology so that we don't introduce questions about, well, does an infraction mean I've done something different? And you already covered the issue of the um issue of had an infraction within one year or three years. And I was wondering why we were sort of picking on the sports versus non-sport kind of events. But that one's been addressed as well. So I'd I'd like to see, you know, the first violation or first uh what um infraction be one or the other. Uh section six point four talks about intervene for compliance purposes. Is that again, an a violation or an infraction? It's another way of saying that. And again, what does that mean versus a violation or infraction, depending which terminology you choose? And again, it's for consistency and clarity for the event holder. Appendix A, um we talked about significant uh when a council um designation as a significant event is required. Would it be useful to also include instruction that basically says, check the council schedule and make sure you have ample time to get it on the on the docket? Because we know that that isn't always what happens. We get it last minute. And how do you deal with that if that's the case? Hopefully, we'll know that, but again, we're trying to cover all all issues. Uh appendix B point twelve, there's copy of proof of security has been shown. And it's really, you're looking to say, have you engaged security services, I believe. Is that correct? Supervisor according.
Please go ahead.
That that is correct. Um it it really depends on the type of event if security is provided. Like I had may have mentioned to uh previously when I had brought this report, this alcohol policy isn't just something that we dump on a renter and hand them and say, okay, go with it. This is something that we work through with them. This is something that our facility managers as well as myself, um we work through them. Sorry, we work with them to work through this policy and make sure all their checks and balances are in place. So there there would not be many times that they would have to come back to us with questions. It's um in doing an event that requires um a special occasion permit, it is a work in progress. So it is something that they work with us on and nothing in this document comes as a surprise as we work with our renters through this document.
Right. And I was hoping to minimize staff as well as avoid, you know, repeat business. Well, I didn't bring, you know, the copy of my security document, but I'll leave that that to you. And the same under point fourteen where it talks about they refer to a list of attendees and in some cases you may not have a list. So do you say not required? Do you say no? If it's not provided but it's required, that's different than not required. And it was done elsewhere. So I leave that again with you, but it's just a clarity point. And then point sixteen, I wasn't sure if this meant when you're asking for identification. Was it a badge or was it going back to the same identification? Like your license, et cetera. And I'm thinking if an event worker is walking around the place, it's nice to know who they are. So I didn't know if you were asking for how those were gonna be identified. Right? And that's under the uh the request for identification, I believe it was event workers.
Okay.
And then appendix C point three, the section states the violations within one year, we took care of that. And then um appendix D, it it says you can't ask for a health card. But if they offer that, I'm assuming that's acceptable, correct?
No, it cannot be accepted. If you were to go to an LCBO or any liquor license agency, uh they are not allowed to accept your health card.
Okay, thank you.
Anything for um
I think that's it.
Supervisor, okay, very good. Thank you councillor Townsend. There were a couple of responses, supervisor Hewlett. I've got two other on the speakers list and then our um madam clerk. Please go ahead, supervisor Hewlett.
I'm sorry, I was just jotting down various notes to follow up with um.
The follow-ups, right? Okay, they were follow-ups from councillor Townsend.
Yes, um I was just taking brief notes of um the points I would like to speak on that he had brought up. So the grounds versus um the diamonds in the chart, um we can correct that. That was just language that had been used in our rates and fees by law, so it was pulled over. And I can I can correct that language if if that is the wish of council and rereading it. Kind of taking an outsider perspective, I can I can see the confusion there, so I will have that corrected um for the diamonds versus the grounds. For the language for infraction versus violation, that language specifically came from our insurance agency and their legal team. So I would feel more comfortable leaving that language as it stands rather than trying to um I don't want to say correct the verbiage, but um that is their best practice and what they have mandated. And that was um written by our insurance company. So I would I would suggest that we follow their lead and their best practice as they are the experts in municipal alcohol policies and our language surrounding that. For section six point four, the reason I would have stated where there has been a failure to comply with the Liquor License Act or any other application legislation, the police or the AGCO may intervene, may, sorry, my apologies, may intervene for compliance purposes. So that is essentially stating that we don't have grounds to overstep where an AGCO inspector or police officer may intervene. The only time they will enter intervene, sorry, is if they believe there has been a failure to comply with the Liquor License Act. For the municipal significance, um in regards to that, I know there has been a request for um verbiage to be updated that states how long they need to put a request to council in in order to get it on the agenda. However, as we know, our agenda is ebb and flow and some are larger and some are smaller. Often these events that require municipal significance don't come out of thin air and we would often be aware of these events long before they are coming to council. So I don't see the need for us to include verbiage, often because it changes based on the time of the event. With these events, they would often have larger requests from council coming forward and majority of the events that would require municipal significance with updates now do not require municipal significance. So any events that are run by us, um various religious organizations, service groups, that sort of thing. The one who, the ones who usually run events that would be quote unquote municipal significant, no longer required. Um in terms of the identification in the request for um the checklist that is outlined, the identification refers to if the event organizers are wearing red shirts that say staff on the back, not necessarily a badge of identification, just all event organizers will be wearing a red shirt or a green shirt or whatever it may be. Something that if a compliance order comes through, we can say all event organizers are wearing X colored shirt.
Okay, that's it. Thank you very much for those answers. I do want to say um speakers list is growing. We've got councillor Shay, deputy mayor Hutchinson, and then the clerk, um and then councillor Hergert. So that's the, and then we'll go back to councillor Townsend because he has spoken already. That seems to be a nice flow. Councillor Shay, please.
Uh thank you. Uh one quick uh question for clarification, Cody, um or Mr. Hewlett. Uh section one point four definitions, uh events, uh public events. Uh is do public events that would include stag and does, right?
Yes, please go ahead to supervisor Hewlett.
Uh technically speaking, stag and does are not public events because they are by invited guests.
Councillor Shay?
Okay, okay, I I I understand now. Thank you.
Anything further?
No.
Okay, deputy mayor Hutchinson then.
Thank you, Mayor Robinson. It's Deputy Mayor Hutchinson here. I just wanted to follow up in regards to what councillor Hutchinson's opening remarks were. Uh I remember the meeting very well, the committee hall when we first started discussing this, the actually the last one, last time. And we did say we were gonna go up to the community and some of the the um users that are are there. And I think we should follow through on what what that request was and at least just get some initial feedback, uh whether it be a dozen or whatnot, there's we we can focus in on. And I think we should have a little bit of input from them. Yes, we do have to uh follow through on the policy. We we know what the rules are gonna be and we we're gonna have to, you know, we're we're have some guidelines that we can't alter and that's fine. But I still think we should um uh communicate with them and and interact with them and see where where they're at and what some of their uh issues may be. That's all I got to say. Thank you, Mayor Robinson.
All right, thank you. Um clerk Sherbeck, please.
Thank you, your worship. Uh just a comment procedurally, how uh committee of the whole moves forward with this. We do need a resolution of some sort to go either direction. So one option is a resolution to um amend the report or amend the plan as follows and list the specific amendment so the direction to staff is very clear and that it be brought forward to a future council meeting for adoption. A second option is uh to table or defer the motion to accept this plan. However, that motion is not debatable. It will require some kind of a timeframe. So either a specific meeting date or upon the completion of an educational session for our user groups, um something specific and then be brought back with some information. I would caution that if it is tabled, looking for public input because the majority of the policy is based on provincial legislation and federal legislation. I mean, games of chance are regulated by the Criminal Code of Canada. So those pieces aren't negotiable and it would be insulting to our users to ask for their opinion on those pieces when we know we can't implement those type of changes. But an educational session for some of our common user groups where they have an opportunity for questions and answers and to offer suggestions that staff could bring back with an amended plan might satisfy both options. And we could clearly present the plan in an educational system and set out, these parts are provincial law. These parts are federal law. And at least find out what the questions and the answers of our users are and their input to to summarize and bring back. But either way, we do need a motion to either amend it and bring it back or move forward. And I would recommend putting parameters around gathering public information such as an educational session.
Okay, for a couple of things. First, I leaned on my computer and my checkmark went up, but that wasn't in any relation to a comment that was made, so I just wanted to get that out and out of the way. So uh madam clerk, we normally have the presentation and some questions and then the motion. Sometimes like for the bylaws, we deal right with the motion. But are you suggesting at this time we get a motion? Or am I still going to be looking to down our speakers list for questions? I I would like that clarity, please.
Uh through you, your worship. Uh that's your prerogative as chair. If you want to continue with um debating how to move forward. But to summarize it, um if you choose to receive more comments, that's your prerogative as chair. At the end of the comments, some kind of a decision has to be made by resolution.
Fair enough, and thank you. Absolutely, it does. And I I certainly want to make sure that our questions are answered for the members of of council sitting as committee. So it looks like we're moving along okay. Uh and then we'll uh look for um a mover and seconder on a motion, but through a checkmark, not a hand up. I want to first go to Madam CIO and then over to uh your case supervisor Hewlett through Madam CIO. Well, then that's the pathway we'll go.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you to our clerk. I'm, I appreciate that um that suggestion. I think I think we we might be losing sight of, well, maybe I am. My recollection was that we were going to talk with the public about licensing our facilities, not about the policy, because we're we're actually dealing with two matters in this one report. Staff has made a recommendation that we we are recommending that it's it's not a good model for us to license our facilities, but if council would like that as part of our direction to to go ahead and ask the public, then we need to capture that. Then we could deal with the policy, which is the second part of this report, and I'm really quite supportive and pleased with the idea of taking it as an education opportunity and collect feedback, but there's very little opportunity to change the bones of this policy. And that's the challenge. So if council could perhaps give some thought to the two pieces of this report and how we could uh, move forward, you know, if, if public consultation for licensing is, uh, if there's council appetite for that, then we could capture that. And if there's appetite for the education component of the policy, that, that might be a sweet spot to land on. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Good, we'll come back to that for sure. So, um, the clerk has spoken. I'm going to go to Counselor Hergert because she has not spoken on this item. I'm going to loop back then to Counselor Townsend and then Counselor Hutchinson. Counselor Hergert, please.
Yes, thank you. So I do recall that meeting as well. I, I think there is merit in, in tabling the policy for now. And I believe that the education and feedback component is very important. I think we can also express that a lot of these items are not changeable. They are federal legislative, they are provincial, they are rules and regulations. And we're just packaging them for our users. And so I think the education part becomes very important because it could really stave off questions and concerns about, well, how can I do this, or can we find a way to include this contest, you know, whatever their specific needs are of the renters. So I think actually in the long run, it would save time, but it does give an opportunity for our users to speak up and tell us why or why not they would rent our facility. And I think that is important. If, if we come back and find out you know, they're not renting because it's not licensed, well, then we need to look at that. We also need to look at maybe the revenues from this year, which may be, you know, reduced significantly. And, and take a look at how do we promote our buildings that we are all paying for so that we can you know, get some more revenue and rent them out more frequently. I don't think the rules are too onerous, especially if you're a responsible adult, you know, preparing for a group of people to come together. But I think the education part about what is mandatory, what we absolutely have to abide by and, and how to include the other items. You know, if somebody comes with an idea about a mass parade ball, well, it doesn't fit in here, but could they ask council? Sure. You know, I think that's the education part that we have to encourage and, and develop their you know, encourage their creativity really to hold and host an event in our facility. And, and I'm sure that Cody makes it, uh, our manager there of recreation, I'm sure that he does take the time. I think maybe for the groups that don't use our facilities, this might be more important to go ask why they don't. And, and then really to lure them back in with, we've got a plan and it's all set out. Is there anything in here you can't agree to? You know, those are the questions we really need to talk to our renters about. And, and like, um, our manager advised Tom and Randy having boots on the ground for these events, it is good to hear their feedback. But there may be things that aren't discussed with Tom and Randy about how their, how a renter's event went. Um, if there were hangups, you know, what could have been better, those type of things. So I was actually curious because we have this phenomenal new website. I was curious if we could have a pop up right at the very beginning. Saying we're taking an active look at our recreation facilities, here's our new policy. You know, solicit input through our new website, solicit a survey through our new website, get people drawn to that new website and make sure their new links all work up and things like that. But this has been on our radar for a while. So with that in mind, I would like to table it. I would like to get the feedback from the users and the non-users as well. And educate our populace as to what we are proposing and, and really, some of this, our hands are tied. So I would be okay to move a motion to table it, get the education and feedback organized and summarize those comments and concerns back to council.
Okay, so that is your motion?
That is my motion.
Is there a secondary for that? Well, hang on a minute, the clerk is, is, has a caution, so clerk, could you speak to all of us? Oh, I'm, I'm wondering if your audio could be enhanced. We're just having some audio. I'm not sure that everybody can hear. Yes.
Okay, thank you, your worship. Through you. With or without this plan, the provincial and federal legislation is in place and will stand. And we are obligated to uphold that legislation in our, all of our facilities.
Okay.
So there is legislation expected, expecting municipalities to have a municipal alcohol plan in place that I believe was in effect at the beginning of the year. Not sure of that date, beginning of the year, Cody?
I believe, I don't have it in front of me.
But in the meantime, while it's being prepared and until it's adopted, we are bound to uphold the provincial and federal legislation that's in place. So just to if Counselor Hergert could repeat her motion, that would help us get it down properly.
So, yeah, motion to table and then a motion for, well, included in this one, is a table until we can have an education component, maybe it's an online initiative, along with feedback and a survey prepared on our new website. And the survey would include, why do you use it? Why do you not use it? Here's our draft policy. Are there any concerns that you have with it? And it could say, you know, even we are limited in, in what we can change. You know, put that right on there. So there, most people recognize we're the lower level of government, but and then summarize those comments and concerns.
Okay, so I just want clarity that our clerk has that information or what it is that you need, please. We're just, um, word smithing here, please wait. The motion is to table until there's an opportu, I'm just paraphrasing at this point, and the mover can move in again. The motion to table until an education component has been completed, also an opportunity for to put a, a survey on our, our new website with the appropriate questions in terms of you know, just are you?
Are you a user of the facilities?
Yeah, are you a user? What is it that, um, how can we help you in effect? What is it that you need as a user? Just a, a comment back. So is that what you're looking for as the mover?
That is.
Okay. Is there, and as clerk, is that satisfying what you need as a motion or if you've got some concerns? Or are you suggesting that it, yeah, go ahead. I don't want to put words in your mouth. I'd like you to just talk, yeah.
Through you, your worship. I just want to make sure that that was a lot in a motion. So that was a lot in a motion. Are you including the specific questions of the survey in your motion?
No, I would leave that to staff.
Good, thank you, yeah.
You know, I, I believe our manager has a very good handle on this file and, and questions should go to him as well. He's the most up to date on it as far as I'm concerned.
So in actual fact, you're just looking for feedback on the report. And that once we achieve that feedback from the community and the user groups, a report comes back to committee the whole.
And so what will the education piece look like?
Well, I'm wondering when we would do that education piece. I'm asking Madam CIO. Is an education piece really good after we have the policy approved? Or is it timing now? So before, let's iron that out, if that's okay with you as mover of the motion?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, Madam CIO then.
Take out appropriate.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor and counsel for the conversation. My recommendation would be if, if you're interested in public input, I'm still not clear what we're asking, so we're at, are we? So we've lumped both pieces of this report back together again. I have to say that this report has been vetted through a number of parties already and we haven't heard from any of our user groups since it's been a public report, so we can do that outreach to make them aware of the report as stands. They can give their, they can send their questions about the policy and we will bring that back to council. And once it's adopted, that would be when we do the education because we have the direction from council that this is the policy that we would like to work under. Regarding the licensing of facilities, you know, there's, there's education that we can do there as well, but that would be comprised through the survey questions. So I think, I think we need to have a motion that gives us that clarity in the division. Um, and, you know, staff are capable of coming up with the questions for, for the licensing survey.
So as mover of the motion, are you wanting just clarity and maybe some suggestions from staff for your motion, or do you want to leave it that you're, you want to table it till we have education now versus later? I'm just wondering how you wish to do that as we've got feedback now.
You know, I think, I think that this is a good time for the education. I'm sorry that I disagree with our CIO right at this moment, but I think it is, this is going to be a, um, you know, we don't want it to be a top-down approach. We want it to be a grassroots from the bottom up so that everybody can have a successful event. So I believe now is the time to communicate it out and, and like has been mentioned already. Several of these items will not be able to be changed. We just really want that discussion between staff and the public even that if they have any concerns, they call right to staff and say, how do I, how do I make this work?
Okay, so thank you for that. I'm looking to, Madam Clerk, to give me, give me and, and the balance of committee the, the language for that motion. And then I would be looking for a, a seconder. How's that? Let's proceed.
Thank you, your worship. I just want to clarify because there has been quite a bit of discussion, so I want to capture your intent properly, Counselor Hewlett. If I could read this back and then we can fine tune it. Be it resolved that recreation report West Gray alcohol policy oh, be tabled until such time as an education component has been provided to the public and uh, feedback has been received regarding the policy, the report and the licensing of facilities through a survey on the website with questions designed by staff.
How's that, Counselor Hergert?
The only thing I would like is after we have that survey, that the comments are summarized and returned to council. And I think that's implied, but I just want to make sure.
Let's add the
And report back to council. Yeah. It's implied, but yes, we'll put it in the motion. How's that?
Clarify that feedback from the education session and the online survey shall be summarized and brought back to a future council meeting.
Yeah, committee of the whole.
Meeting.
Yeah, future meeting.
Is that, capture that clearly?
Perfect. You said yes to that. Is there a secondary? And I'm looking for a checkmark, not a hand. So if there's a secondary, Counselor Hutchinson, are you seconding this motion?
Yeah, yes, Counselor Hutchinson, second the motion. I, I just think we could have made that a little clearer, but that motion, but anyways. I want to make sure that, that upfront that we do go to, do ask the question about licensing our facility, facilities, because that was the number one thing that I think we were asking for to begin with is do we, does the public want us to look at licensing, licensing our facilities? And then in the meantime, we can educate on the education policy. So there's two, two parts to it, I think. That would be my suggestion, but yes, I will second the motion.
So with that, Counselor Hergert, are you fine with that clarity in the motion?
I could take that as a friendly amendment, of course.
Okay, well, thank you for being friendly on that. And Madam Clerk, can you make that friendly amendment? And let's see how the, the language is for it. It's just that we're seeking feedback on the licensing, potential licensing of the facility and that the education be part of that overall policy that we're looking at.
Yes, thank you through you, your worship. Moved by Counselor Hergert, seconded by Counselor Hutchinson. Be it resolved that uh, recreation, oh, sorry. That the recreation report West Gray alcohol policy be tabled until such time as an educational session can be provided to the public, along with feedback received by way of a survey on the website regarding possible future licensing of our municipal facilities. And that the information, the feedback received from the educational sessions and the survey be summarized and be brought back to a future meeting for committee's review.
Right, and this is as we're sitting in committee, it's a recommendation to council for this. Okay, is that good as the mover and as the seconder, starting with Counselor Hergert as the mover?
Yes, I'm fine with that.
Thank you, Counselor Hutchinson as a seconder.
Yes, that's fine.
Good, and I have an indication that Madam CIO wanted to talk before I ask for questions, before I call the vote. Please go ahead, Madam CIO.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I just have a one small concern. When we say educational sessions, to me, that means that we're going to actually hold sessions. Could we, would it be okay with council if it was educational outreach or, or initiative or consultation, something like that, because uh, under current state, we can't really hold weeks, so.
What about online? There, there's different opportunities to, you know, there's those what I've seen innovative, and I'm not telling you what to do on your job because I'm on the other side of the fence, of course. But I've seen some really great stuff out there and, and our coordinator of communications has also shown me where it's, um, somebody as the narrator and there's sketches being drawn of different characters or activities. That, that really is a message that's memorable in online opportunity. Because we're still in the social distancing and small gathering approach, so anyway, an outreach for an educational, well, we'll leave that to staff, I think, that can come up with some innovative ideas.
Yes, thank you. And my, my concern truly was with the word session because to me, that means we're gathering people together and we're holding a workshop where if we can revise that with educational outreach, then we can implement some kind of online campaign or something like that, or maybe even campaigns is the better word. I'll leave it with the clerk. But I think that that's the intention of the motion is we're not going to gather people together. We're going to do a campaign, an educational campaign on the policy.
Perfect, and I, I really appreciate the expression of detail on that, and if we could go with educational outreach. I want to stay away from campaign. I know there's communication campaigns, but educational outreach is really great. Mover of the emotion, are you good?
Yes, I appreciate the clarity. Thank you.
Thank you. As seconder, Counselor Hutchinson, are you good now with everything?
Yes, I'm fine. I'm just, I'm just wondering about, I really feel that we need to reach out to our, our user groups rather than just say throw up the survey and expect them to, to to answer it, like, because everyone's not on board with technology as we know, so I would really like to see us do a little outreach also in there, but that does not appear in the motion.
Madam CIO, was that part of what you were doing to the outreach to our user groups, maybe letting them know that survey was there and because we do want to get to our user groups and that's part of, that could be part of the outreach, would you suggest? I don't think we necessarily need to build that into the motion, but I see the intent of a committee in this.
Through you, Madam Mayor, I do agree that that would just be part of the, the group that we would include. And to your point, counselor, about not everybody being on the, on technology, we are obligated to provide surveys in alternate formats anyway.
Right, yeah, for sure.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Hutchinson?
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay, so we do have the motion before us. I'm looking for Okay, so we do have the motion before us. I'm looking for questions or comments and certainly we have Counselor Townsend with his end up, please. Oh, okay, Clerk.
Thank you.
Oh, hang on, Counselor Townsend, I have a indication from the clerk that she wishes to speak. Pardon me, Counselor Townsend.
Thank you through you, Your Worship. Motion to table or defer an item of business is not debatable. So the, the crafting and the fine tuning of the wording was important. So the intent was clear, but it's now just a vote.
You're telling me to call the vote? That's fair. No, thank you on the procedural part. Uh, so Counselor Townsend and other committee members, I need to call the vote now.
That was my question.
Good, perfect. On the, on the motion, all those in favor, please signify with a check mark. All those opposed, please signify with a next mark. Okay, so I will begin. Mayor Christine Robinson, I am in favor of the motion. Counselor Townsend, state your name and how you're voting.
Counselor Townsend, not in favor.
Counselor Hergert, state your name and how you're voting.
Counselor Hergert, yes.
Counselor Shay, state your name and how you're voting.
Counselor Shay, yes.
Deputy Mayor Hutchinson, state your name and how you're voting.
Deputy Mayor Hutchinson, in favor.
Counselor Hamilton, state your name and how you're voting.
Counselor Hamilton, yes.
Counselor Hutchinson, state your name and how you're voting.
Counselor Hutchinson, in favor.
Motion does carry. Please clear your dashboard. All right, we're moving on to the next item. And that is another interesting item. Six point two, West Gray Corporate Communication Strategy and Visual Identity Guide. We have Jonathan Zettel, our coordinator of communication in the C A O's office. We are anticipating a, a really great presentation. Communicate with us.
Uh, hello, I hope you can hear me. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you.
Uh, so today we're looking at the first ever communication strategy for the municipality of West Gray. Um, in general, this is a way to standardize our communicate, our corporate communication. It should, or hopefully it will, improve customer service and ensure that we are A O D A compliant on some of those different communications. I, I think, I think I'll just leave it there for questions. I'm sure that a lot of counselors and probably the mayor have a lot of questions about this, so I think we'll just leave it there. I think everyone's read the, read through the strategy. It really is our, our intent to kind of standardize a lot of the things that are already have been, have been being used, just no one's actually put it down on paper. So that's kind of the key point of it. I guess we'll open it up and.
Okay. Well, I thank you. I've been anticipating a, a communication and just a, a communication strategy. I, I think it shows the, the intent, but also the maturity of the municipality when there is a document in place that can be referred to for the communication. One of the things that I want to mention and, and I'm, I'm drawn to the quote that you have on page sixty-six from George Bernard Shaw, uh, where it talks about the single biggest problem in communication is the illusion that it has taken place. That is certainly the struggle when, uh, we're trying very hard to be transparent and, uh, ensuring that communication, whether it's a one-way, two-way or multi-way, um, and using all the resources that we have possible. One of the other things that I, I'm just going to put it forward and then I'm, I'm looking to, um, members of committee for questions on this. And ultimately, if there is a motion and, um, a vote on this, I, I'll be looking to the clerk to read the recommendation on that as well. But an interesting point I just want to mention to my colleagues and certainly staff is Stephen Covey. When we listen with the intent to understand others rather than with the intent to reply, we begin the true communication and relationship building. Opportunities to then speak openly and to be understood become much more natural, uh, become much more natural and, and easy. And I think that's really important, actively listening and, uh, in being engaged. And then, uh, rather than just listen for a reply or an opportunity to, um, uh, rebut in, in some cases, so just a very, um, positive way that, that we can communicate in a collaborative way. So as you could tell, I'm very excited about this report. Uh, enough being said on my part. Counselor Townsend, please.
Thank you, Counselor Townsend. My first observation is that it's more than just a communication strategy and visually or identity guide. It really is a branding as well. And I guess that's the biggest part that bothers me. I did some research on if we go black and white, for example, on our logo, how does that compare to our neighbors? And it actually shows them as vibrant, energetic. It shows us as dull, um, drab, if you will. And it doesn't really talk about what we are. Other logos around, not just within Gray County, but elsewhere, try to incorporate something about them. Try to bring some attraction to it, you know, and if you, if you check that out, you'll see that. A branding activity in my mind is much larger than just communication. It's, you're selling yourself. You need to know the people you're trying to draw in the sense of what attracts them, what are they liked about certain versions or opportunities? And I don't think we've done any of that. So the logo issue does bother me. When you go to the, uh, the website, it's the same thing with the, the black and white. It really doesn't, um, sort of jump out at me as something that's attractive or warm, touchy feeling. And so from that perspective, I, I don't really see this as a positive move. I guess I'm a little bothered that it's there before we approved it. We'll have a discussion on that later. But I also, and that's with the new website. And then the other, the other catch is that when, when you look at the West Gray and black and white, I find the, the G and the Y in gray really doesn't stand out. If you don't know what you're looking at, it's difficult. And therefore I'm concerned about site-challenged or, um, impaired individuals. How well are they going to take that on? And I've always thought that about our logo, by the way, so it's not anything new. Getting older, I find that is a bit of a challenge too. So, um, hopefully I'm not speaking for all people my age, but it is something that you do have to consider when you're bringing it in. And that's something that branding takes care of. It looks at those as well. So I'm going to keep my comments at the high level with one exception. And that is when we talk about, um, uh, in point seven, we talk about the traffic. And I'm, I'm kind of disappointed in that word. I'd like to think that we're probably looking at customer interactions and things of that nature. And people will figure that out. And I don't think they're traffic. You know what I mean? It's, it's something that says, if we're going to be talking about interactions and that kind of thing, I hope we don't use that language when we go outside of here and it's not publicly stated as traffic. Unless we specifically say it has to do with how many times people come to our website, for example. And again, let's make sure we understand we're trying to service the customer. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. And how about we go to Jonathan Zettel for a, as our communications coordinator to provide some insight and, and responses to our Counselor Townsend's concerns?
Uh, yeah, through you, Mayor, to Counselor Townsend. Thank you so much for the question. I really do appreciate your feedback on all of this stuff. Um, I know some of it can be pretty heady, for lack of a better term. Um, and I, I do agree that branding is a very much a bigger discussion. And, uh, and to be frank, we're just not there yet. Um, this is, this is not, you will not find the word branding. You won't, you won't find the word branding anywhere in this communication strategy. It's very much an identity. When someone asks you for your identity, you give your driver's license. This shows you, uh, your address. It shows you a picture of what you look like and, and, but it doesn't really tell you about who you are. So I, I think that the branding piece is something that's going to come much later. Once we, uh, once we really, uh, once we really standardize, uh, a lot of these kind of tactics and, uh, and move forward that way. Your, your second point was on the accessibility of the logo. New logos, uh, do have to be, uh, A O D A compliant, um, but this does not apply to old logos. So I don't think we need to worry about that right now. Um, and you mentioned traffic too. Uh, traffic is an industry term. That's, uh, what, but, but that's just the term for the amount of people that come to your site. It's not, no, it doesn't mean, you know, that it's people at all. So I hope that, I hope that helps you, uh, with some of those issues. And I look forward to continuing this dialogue.
I'd like to respond to that. Please, Madam Chair.
Go for it.
Um, first of all, logos are branding. Um, I've gone through two very significant branding efforts for major corporations and with, uh, experts in the branding field. And your logo and your messaging in many ways is considered branding. And you can destroy a company through lack of it. And if you look at people like Nike, their logo is their swoosh, probably the most successful one in history. If you speak to, uh, experts in the field as well. So I do have a concern that we are actually going into branding. And if you're saying we're not doing branding now, then I would argue we do not change a logo. We leave it until we're prepared to do a full branding initiative and we don't create a problem by how people see us. And same with the, with the tagline of nestled in nature. That is, that is part of our branding. We've, and, and whether or not we realize that, unless you've gone through that, you may not realize that's exactly what you're doing. So I, I would caution about doing that. If you say, we're not branding, we're not, we're not there yet. I would caution you to take a step backward, at least on the logo and say, let's wait till we are ready. And if you want to confirm that before you move forward, I'm more than happy to, to, um, agree to that. I think that would be the smart thing to do if you doubt what I'm saying and then, um, make sure that branding and logos do go together. And I think you'll find they do.
Appreciate your comments. We'll go to Madam C A O and then Counselor Shay, please. First, Madam C A O.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Counselor, for your comments. Uh, one thing that I'd like to point out is that our logo in the burgundy is one version of it. We also have always used the logo in black. So we are not creating a new standard for the logo. We're just going with the black version that has been approved. The challenge with the burgundy version is the black drop shadow, which actually makes it more difficult to, um, visualize. So dropping the black shadow is, was a step toward accessibility. Uh, going with the black logo was a second step because of the clarity and the cleanness of, of a simple logo. I'd like to point out that, that when we were working on this project, we looked at other orders of government. And in fact, the, um, the provincial government, their trillium is black and white. So there is some, there is some, uh, there's some thinking out there that simple is appropriate. If council would like us to do a branding strategy, we would love that, but right now we really just want to standardize and use the assets that we have. And that was the purpose of this, um, report and this presentation.
Thank you. Counselor Shay, please.
Uh, yes, uh, yes, thank you for this report, Jonathan. Um, I think it's, uh, it's thorough, it's effective. It, um, you know, really takes us quite a ways down, uh, this path that we're starting on with, uh, branding and, 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 and identity management. Um, I did have a couple of specific things that I wanted to ask about. We seem to not, uh, use photographs with, that include people. Uh, and I'm, I think it was explained to me why we don't, but I, I really do miss the people. Uh, is that something that we could revisit or is there a rationale here that I need to be reminded of?
Um, Jonathan Zettel, please.
Uh, yeah, through you, Mayor. Thank you for the question, Counselor. There are some concerns about that. I mean, we, um, we, we do have a, we do have to make sure that we have permission uh, in a lot of cases because, uh, it's a promotional, they're used for promotional reasons, I guess. So there are some considerations with that. Um, I mean, I, I honestly, it really comes down to the fact that the bulk of the library that we have at this time uh, contains these beautiful nature shots. Uh, so I, I do agree that, um, pictures of people are really important. And they do bring a lot of life to, uh, whatever piece of marketing that you're talking about. We just, we really don't have solid people shots right now. So, um, it's definitely on our radar and it's, uh, something that we will be looking forward to in the future.
Do we get those, did we like buy a library, like the Telfer Weg library or something like that?
Uh, yeah, something like that.
Okay, and they don't include people?
Uh, there, there are, uh, currently there are not a lot of, uh, very solid people shots.
Okay, well, I, I would like to see more people down the road if that's at all possible, but I'll leave that up to you.
Counselor Shay, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I have indication from Madam C A O. And also I'm hearing, uh, with, uh, um, our, um, communications coordinator Jonathan Zettel that yes, we, that will be, uh, an endeavor that will be taking place for more people shots. So I just want to close the loop on that one for you and for committee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I, I want to point out, uh, this is just a little quirk that sort of, uh, I don't like very much is that whenever I get an email from someone in the municipality, it, my email client tells me that there's an attachment, there's an image attachment. And I, whenever I see something that says there's an image attachment, I always think, oh, I better, I better look at the attachment. You know, there's probably a PDF attached or a document that I need to, and it's, it's the logo. So the fact that we include the logo in the signature, uh, on emails, uh, I find distracting. I would, um, just as soon see the logo not included in email signatures. Again, this is a tiny little thing and I, I don't really need you to heed my advice, but I'm going to offer it anyway.
Yes, and with that, Madam C A O, she has a response. And I know it's a tiny thing, but let's, let's close the loop on that. Madam C A O.
Thank you through, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Counselor Shay, for that, um, that reminder. Um, and I do also see sometimes that the logo is a little box with a red X in it. If your, um, email isn't the latest version, that sort of thing. So, you know, I would like to take that back and have a conversation with Jonathan about it because, um, I have no concerns if we do not include the logo in our email signature. So, um, with that, I'll leave it there and I'll speak with Jonathan. We, we go, uh, take that from here. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Still have the mic?
Okay, so my final thing is, um, I, I don't feel like we were properly introduced to our website. I'm not certain of the status of our website. Uh, I know that I'd seen the new website is online, but I don't know, is it complete? Uh, is there still more work to be done? Is there opportunity to, uh, add things if council at some point wanted to say, we'd like to see such and such on the website? Is, is that possible? Or is this like now written in stone until our next major redo? Uh, I'd, I'd like to sort of be walked through the website. Um, like a couple of things that leap out at me is I can't find bylaws any easier now than I could on the old website. And I can't find old agendas and minutes. Like, so these are sort of, um, I, I'm hoping these are transitional issues. So I don't know if either of you could respond to that.
Yes, and I'm going to direct the question to Coordinator Zettel, please.
Uh, yeah, through you, Mayor. Um, so the website is, uh, is up and running. Um, so that's great. A lot of, there is, uh, I guess kind of behind the scenes, there is still a lot of work to be done. Especially with around navigation. Um, part of, part of the, what we have on our site is the ability on the backend to track what people are searching for and how people navigate the site. Um, so a lot of that, I, I'm paying very close attention to that stuff and making sure that, so for example, if someone does a search for bylaws, that it comes up with the bylaws module and you're able to search, uh, the bylaws that we have available. So a, a lot of that work depends on use. It depends on me collecting data. I mean, a good example of it was that, uh, people have been searching, uh, the past couple of days about, uh, information on fireworks. Well, fireworks isn't something that we had on our old site, but, uh, I made sure that we posted, um, some fireworks safety tips uh, this morning and made sure that when people do search for fireworks, uh, that goes directly to that page. So, um, there, there are, there are, there's just things that it's, we could not foresee or could not predict that people are going to want to, want. And I'm sure, uh, there are things that council would like to see up. So we're looking for that feedback for sure. And, uh, and it's really, if, if this isn't a project, they were, okay, we're done. Like, let's like, the website's up, that's it. Uh, it's very much an ongoing thing. Um, it's something that needs to be watched and monitored and, uh, and, and kept up to date as we move along. So I hope that answers your question, Counselor Shay.
It, it, it does and it doesn't. Um, I, I just searched on fireworks and couldn't find anything, uh, by the way.
Sorry, sorry, you'll have to, you'll have to give it, you'll have to give it a bit of time to, to update. That was just this morning.
And I searched on bylaws and it's, it gives me five results. So I understand that there are five bylaws available on the website. So I understand that there are five bylaws available on the website. But, you know, it's, I, I think there's lots of people that want to be able to search for all of our bylaws. So I'm, I'm, the, the idea that, uh, we're going to only post things after people search for them and are unsuccessful in finding it, uh, seems sort of like trying to play catch up, or it seems like not being proactive. I, I would, I would hope that, uh, we would try to make the website more comprehensive. Uh, and another example of that is that if we go to the, uh, section, website map, and it gives a list of all the sort of, all the sections that are on the website. Many of them are very, very thin, like it'll say, uh, this, you know, click here to go to the, get more information on this from the province or something like that. Like, why would we have a section on, why would we be including a page that says, go somewhere else to get the information? Why wouldn't we just put the information? I'm hoping these are going to be fleshed out, is my point.
Yeah, I'm wondering if, uh, Coordinator Zettel would be able to, uh, respond, or is this on the to-do list? Either way, could you provide a response?
Sure, through you, Mayor. Um, just, I, I guess, um, I'm not sure where to start. So, uh, for, for linking out to other sites, so there are a lot of provincial programs that, um, that are not, you know, taken care of by us. So in order to make sure that those links out to, uh, provincial programs are up to date, it's really important that we link to the place where they are always going to be up to date. We are not the authorities on, um, on those programs. So we, we can, we can, we, we could give a bit more of a blurb and then link them out. But a lot of the brevity that you're, that you're looking at is, um, is that we were very mindful of, uh, of, of mobile users. I, I know that the statistics were that prior to this launch, uh, we had about 20% of our users were using mobile devices and now it's up to 60. So it's even, um, greater than, uh, our, our desktop versions. So, uh, to view a lot of information on a small screen is, uh, you know, that's something that our, our vendors have been telling us to, just to watch for. And to keep a lot of the stuff as brief as possible. So I, I hope that answers your question.
Counselor Shay, please.
I, I have more questions, but I think this will, needs to be a longer discussion, um, like over the next year. So I, I think I will just, um, try to find an opportunity to, you know, ask the questions offline. I don't have any issues. I just have a lot of questions.
Well, very good. I think the offline would work and, and, um, we'll see the benefit of those discussions, um, on our website. And, uh, communicate it out to our, our council. Thank you. Anything further, Counselor Shay?
No, just, uh, congratulations on a job well done.
Wow, that's very nice staff. Are you hearing that? Very good. Counselor Hamilton, please.
Thank you, Mayor Robinson, and, and thank you. I mean, this is the moment we've all been waiting for, this new website. How long have we been talking about a new website? So thank you. I do just have some smaller questions, if you don't mind entertaining. I, I too was wondering about like a website tour or some sort of, um, well, for council, just, uh, to navigate the new, new website and answer any questions. So that's something that we could do on, uh, perhaps another committee of the whole, just to take us on a little tour through the website. And, um, that might be an opportunity for us to pose more questions. So that's a question to staff.
Yes, I'm just gonna say, yes, we could do that. We've got smiles on. I'm looking at our CIO and our clerk, they're smiling about it. So I'm gonna say, yes, that is an affirmative. We'll have some sort of, um, tutorial, if you will. How's that?
That sounds great. That sounds great. And likewise, um, I know, wow, uh, we're moving into the eScribe world as well. And there'd be a tutorial with that as well, I'm anticipating.
Yes. Oh, Clerk Sharpak, please.
Thank you through you, your worship. Absolutely, there'll be a tutorial on that. At this point in time, for council and members of the public, attending the virtual meetings and accessing the agenda in the minutes is very much the same. But when counselors, uh, attend meetings, uh, through the eScribe portal, you'll have an icon on your iPad or your laptop to access things. So that access will change a little bit and they'll definitely be training on that for all of council. That will be a, uh, special session of its own.
Very good. Counselor Hamilton, you still have the mic?
Thank you. I still have a few tiny questions. I just noticed today on, um, the, like the PDF version of the agenda that it didn't include, excuse me, it didn't include like the Zoom meeting login information. And perhaps that was just because we, we changed over to eScribe, I'm not sure. But I just wanted to, um, ensure that that login information is available to the public.
We will definitely make sure that that is included, um, on the template moving forward, so it can't be missed.
Thank you. Oh, no worries. I just noticed that as I was logging on, because that's usually actually how I, um, access the meeting. Okay, thank you. And, and follow up to Counselor Shay's question about, um, our historical record of agendas and minutes and, um, well, bylaws. What should we expect in terms of uploading that, that information as our timeline of getting that record online?
Coordinator Zettel?
Yeah, through you, um, through you, Mayor, to Counselor Hamilton. Uh, thank you for the question. So, uh, this project, I worked hand in hand with, uh, Lindsay Glaser on this. So, um, we're working together to, um, to make it as accessible as possible. All of the, there's a lot of bylaws, obviously, and a lot of them are very, um, they're, they're not, they're not accessible. Is the plan made to say that? I guess they're just not accessible. That takes, it, it requires a, an incredible amount of, um, staff time. And, and, um, to, to make them accessible. In some cases, it's really retyping the entire thing. So, uh, we are working through that. Right now, we have as many of the, um, the more popular ones that we could get up as fast as possible. But we are, we're going to continue to, uh, to get as many up as possible. I think the same is said for the agendas, the past agendas. Uh, we went back as far as June, and if anybody needs, uh, any older agendas, we'd be more than happy to send it to them. Moving forward, all of our agendas will be online and they will be, um, hyperlinked, uh, which is just an incredibly smooth look to everything and so easy to use. So we're really excited about the integration with eScribe.
Thank you. So I'm just pinning that idea. I don't know if that's a possible AMO delegation, but to have some support around, uh, making our historical documents, uh, meet accessibility requirements, uh, wouldn't that be great? Because to hear that it's taking as much staff time as it is, uh, that must be really challenging for us. Perhaps it's something we might want to appeal to our provincial government to provide some support around that. But I am, so I am concerned then. I know as a counselor, I do a lot of research about how decisions have been made or how did we get to this point? Or has this question been asked of council before as a new counselor? And I go to Google and I'll, I'll type in West Gray, I'll type in the issue. And, um, prior minutes, prior agendas, I've gone back four or five years sometimes and found some of the discussion points or could point me to YouTube or I can watch it as well. Without that information, that, that's a concern for me in, um, in having the, the big picture. So again, just wondering about a timeline or what we should expect. Will every agenda and, and every minutes be uploaded to the website at some point?
Uh, uh, is this a question for, um, Jonathan Zettel or Madam CIO? Are you wishing to take it? Approach. I'm gonna go with Madam CIO then, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Madam Mayor. And, uh, I will, I will have Jonathan chime in and perhaps our new clerk. We, we really need to be careful on how we, um, keep our website accessible. And that, that's, you know, the regulations by January 2021 are, um, I forget the, the classification. But anyway, we, you know, to repopulate the website with all of the old, um, material means that we are retyping all of the old material. I think, you know, from a customer service perspective, we are more than happy to provide that material in alternate formats. But we have to make some decisions and draw a line on just how much of the old gets transferred to the new. You know, an archive system is, is really what we're looking at and, uh, keeping the website as, as current and lean as we can. So Jonathan, do you have anything to add to that, please?
Uh, yeah, no, that's, uh, through you, Mayor. That's exactly right. It, it, it really does come down to the, our ability as staff to get these documents up. I mean, some, in some cases, we're looking at, uh, the, a PDF of something that's been photocopied, right? So there's, that's not, it's not a real, like, we can't pull text from it because it's just an image. It makes it really challenging to, uh, to make these, uh, documents accessible. I do hear your point on the ability to search back over these, uh, over the past, um, ones. But again, if there's any particular, um, document that you would like, I'm sure that we can facilitate that for you.
Thank you. So I'm still left feeling concerned because even, um, I would have to recall what meeting it was, what the topic was. Whereas, uh, Google used to do all that work for me and I could easily pull it up. So I, I hear the, that we have a mandate for accessibility. We also need to be transparent and have information available for council and, and the community. And I think that's, um, very important. So if, if staff could come back with, um, what resources they would need to, perhaps the staff could say, hey, if you wanted, what, what kind of, maybe this is a discussion for another day, is what I'm hearing, that we could arrive at a place of a, how much, what kind of information we want to see restored online. And what that, um, resource would require. It sounds like it'd be a budget resource, right? Allocating that budget. I think if we could pin this discussion for another day, it's, it's really important to, to me. And I think, um, for the decision-making that we make at council.
Sorry, I was just gonna say a valid comment in terms of, you know, if you're researching a, a particular item, you're wanting to have that background information in terms of relevant bylaws, irrelevant staff reports. I do have an indication from our CIO that she will do a follow-up and bring that back to, uh, to our committee in terms of, of how, um, how that can be addressed. And that's not a bad thing for an AMO delegation. I jot it down, so I'll just bring that forward at the next. I think it's kind of a, a interesting approach, but, uh, but the, the, our CIO is saying that she'll, uh, look further into that. So thank you very much.
Thank you, and I appreciate that. Um, that we're not the only municipality struggling with that too, right? Striking that balance. So, so thank you for that. So I'll pin that there. Um, just a couple of smaller things. Would this be the right time to ask about, um, we're talking about communicating with the public. I've always been interested in having, um, council highlights, kind of like, um, I think Gray County does this where they'll, on their social media, they'll say, hey, this is the meeting that's coming up. This is what's going to be discussed. And then there's a second follow-up post saying, here's some of the outcomes from that meeting. Again, is that something I should bring up now or is that something for another day?
So, um, I say we bring it up now and get a response and whether it is a follow-up on a, on another day, for sure. But I would like an initial response, uh, to that, um, on behalf of you and the, the balance of committee. Uh, I'm gonna start with Madam CIO because you would obviously oversee that. And then if, if need be to Coordinator Zettel, but let's start with you.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, Counselor, thank you for that, that question. I'm not familiar with what that format looks like or what that platform is. Right now, we are still developing the website. So, you know, that's, that's an interest. I, I really would like to take that as a takeaway and we will get back to you on what that could look like. I mean, as a communication tool, I think it's very valuable to let the public know what council will be debating and, um, deciding. And then what those, that collective decision was. So I, I see that there's a fit there. But if you're okay, I'm just going to keep that in my note of, um, things to chat with staff about.
Okay, thank you very much. And yeah, I, I referred to Gray County as, uh, an example of that. So thank you.
I use that tool quite often. I have to admit, when I do my reports back to council, I go back to the highlights. And that's, it's a very useful tool. So anyway, uh, Counselor Hamilton, you still have the mic?
Okay, I still have a few more questions. Thank you. I'm wondering about when, uh, citizens have concerns or complaints or there's a pothole. We had talked about the website generating a work order. And I'm just not familiar enough with the website to know if that's part of it now or something that's coming or just, so just checking in on that component.
Coordinator Zettel, please.
Uh, yeah, through you, Mayor. Um, so a couple of different, um, things happening on this. So there is, if you click on report a concern, it does pop up with a form. We have the ability to create these forms in, uh, in, in quite a good amount of detail. So, um, this one will ask you, you know, what's your concern about? Uh, is it, is it, uh, roads related? Um, there's a couple of other questions for it. And then that is submitted, uh, to, uh, to a public email. Or it's not public, it's, it's a shared email address, uh, communications@westgray.com. And from there, it's, uh, shot off to the appropriate people. Um, so that is in place. Uh, and I'm, I'm also, I, I know that our Public Works team is working on, um, a program called Mesh and, uh, and, uh, there will be, or I, it's my understanding that there'll be integrations, uh, through that as well. But that, that's still in the early stages. So, uh, more to come on that for sure.
Excellent. Okay, that's good to hear. Thank you. Okay, just a couple of really smaller points. Our name badges. I've had feedback from people, when I'm at a conference, they see my name, they see West Gray. But then their next question is, oh, are you staff? Oh, are you a counselor? Because there's no, um, position or title there. Is that something that we could integrate into a name badges? Since I'm bringing that up because it's mentioned name batches in this, uh, report.
So I'm, I'm getting a nod from, uh, Madam CIO for that. So, and that, that's valid. It's another communication tool, right? For sure.
Thank you. Okay. And then on page 27 of the report, it speaks to glossy print products. So just through sustainability lens, um, some members on the committee have raised that they were concerned that, uh, West Gray was going, was using the glossy paper for newsletters. Because we're unable to recycle that, uh, kind of paper. Well, I love how like flashy it looks and it's the kind of product you want to keep around. You don't want to recycle it right away. But, um, I think there's an opportunity here for West Gray to use products that are sourced from good sources, whether it be recycled, uh, paper or FST certified or perhaps hemp-based paper maybe. But also that those materials then be recyclable. Same with any products that we purchase, t-shirts, hats, that they be sustainably sourced. So just look, just looking to staff for, um, is there consideration towards sourcing sustainable products?
That should be top of our, uh, staff's mind and council's mind all the time. Counselor, uh, Counselor, good question, Counselor. Uh, Coordinator Zettel?
Uh, yeah, through you, Mayor. Thank you for the question, uh, Counselor Hamilton. In the strategy, it does say that, um, titles and credentials should be avoided with the exception of members of council. So I do feel that it's important that if you have a name tag, it should say Counselor Hamilton on it. And, and not just be staff. I think that the, the, the kind of theory behind keeping, um, credentials and off for staff or for, it would be ideal for everybody, but I understand that there should be a difference for council. Is that it's such a small space, you, you just don't have the, you don't have the room to put, uh, like the, the director of Public Works and Infrastructure just isn't, you know, there's just not enough space for that. So, um, that's kind of where I was coming from and, uh, and it kind of falls in line with our brevity kind of mandate too. So, um, so that answers that question, I hope. And, um, as far as, uh, uh, sustainable, um, products, uh, you know, thank you very much for raising this. It, it, it is, it is something that we, I think, I think there's, uh, the feeling out there that we should be considering these things as we move forward, for sure.
Okay, thank you very much. And, um, I think I'll leave it there. Thank you very much, Mayor Robinson.
Oh, you're welcome. Great discussion points. I'm just gonna go down the line, uh, for the comments here. Counselor Townsend, Counselor Hutchinson, Counselor Hergert. Um, Counselor Townsend, please.
Uh, thank you, Counselor Townsend. I may just have two comments. The first one is data conversion from the old website to the new website should be very, very simple. But what it sounds like is happening is you're also trying to make it accessible in a different way. And what I mean by that is you made the comment that some of the items are just, um, photocopied maybe multiple times and then scanned in and et cetera. I would argue, you would never go through a conversion and drop data. If you plan on updating it, what you would do is put what you have and then put a project together when it gets the right priority to actually do that upgrade to the quality of the data and eliminate what you don't want and et cetera. But I'm not sure that when you change a website format, that you would automatically remove data or access to data to the public. So now we're even less compliant in being transparent and providing the information while we figure out how to do it better. And I, I just think that should be a totally separate project than your actual conversion. So that's, that's a, a comment, not a question, and I'll just leave that with you.
So noted.
Okay, my second one has to do with the logo. I didn't raise it earlier because I wanted to go back and check the report in a few. I didn't raise it earlier because I wanted to go back and check the report in a few areas of it. First of all, the corporate logo portion basically says, black is it? Or white is it on the opposite background? There are no other colors allowed, so we are in fact changing the logo or what you're allowed to do. There's no slogan, so it's not just a version of the the logo. We are actually talking about changing the logo permanently. In addition, I went and checked, and there is also a statement of going through and changing all our. All our internal letterhead, all our external letterhead. Our business cards, our promotional products. I assume that means we'll change the logo on vehicles and et cetera. That's a huge expense if we in fact. Are not comfortable with it. Or we need to rethink it because it's not just the website. And that's the point that I don't think was raised or was clear when we did it before. Given our financial challenges, and we saw that last year, we saw it the year before, I don't see that going away. I'm not sure that this is the right time and to go back and redo all that again when we do a branding exercise. So again, I just needed to to ensure I had my facts right before I I made that portion of the statement. And that's from you, from the the report that's before us. And so I just want people to realize the impact of saying, yes, we're prepared to change the logo. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for those comments. Is there anything further before I ask our CIO to respond and go down the further speaker list? Counselor Townsend?
I'm fine, thank you.
You're quite welcome. I have an indication that Madam CIO wishes to speak. And then it is Counselor Hutchinson and then Counselor Hergert. Madam CIO, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And Counselor Townsend, thank you for raising that concern. We did, we are aware of the financial implications of of any kind of change to visual identity or branding. In fact, in the report, our proposal is that our intention is that we would only replace the logos as we're ordering new business cards. So we're expecting to use what we have and, you know, for business cards, for example, use them. And when it comes to reordering, then that that's when the new design would kick in regarding letterhead and. Internal forms, we actually don't have those printed. We just print them directly from our computer and off they go. So there's no printing budget for that. And then when we get to vehicle deckles, there again, once a vehicle is ordered, then the new placement of a logo would kick in.
Okay. All right. Counselor Hutchinson, please.
Yeah, Counselor Hutchinson here. Just a few comments, if I can get my computer to work here. Yeah, good. So I I'm excited about the new website. I realize that seems it's sort of a work in progress. I guess the other thing that I think we're sort of hearing is that it would have been nice maybe if we. We as a council had a chance to sort of spend a little bit of time sort of perusing it and giving some feedback before it went public. But anyways, it's out there and it's it's, you know, it's going to be a thing, like I say, a work in progress. And there's going to be some changes. I've already, I haven't been on it that much, but I've already found one error which I'll forward to to Jonathan when I when I get time. I I was Counselor Shea had mentioned, I do like the idea of pictures with people and particularly, I think. A lot of people come to our area because of our waterways, our dams, our bridges. You know, our floating down the rivers, you know, so on. So I think we can promote that part of it more too, like getting those pictures out there for people to see. I think part of the frustrations that I have and I think I think most of us have is that we're in COVID times. And and it's hard to communicate. I think if we were face to face and some of these things would maybe get done in a different manner. So I think that we have to sort of chalk it up to time, but I do, I do think we are moving forward. And I'm happy to see that we, you know, got some new things going with in terms of website and so on. Couple of questions about, we're talking about files and whatnot. I do like the idea of having an Escribe tutorial or something just because, you know, you talk about it. And I really don't know what what all that means for us. But also, we, I think we talked about Tom rooms. I'm not sure if that's the correct term, Tom rooms. And it's a it's a filing system, right? And our clerk, any clerk can maybe tell us, they'll talk a little bit about that. But I don't know why that that comes into play in terms of some of our older files and getting files organized and and accessible and searchable. So that may be something she can maybe talk to us about. And then my other question is Intranet. Is the Intranet going to be gone? Is that some because I I have trouble getting into it now anyways, but is it something of the something of the past? So I'll leave it there.
Good questions. I'm going to start with Clerk Charbeck to talk about Tom rooms and how it relates or doesn't relate.
Thank you. Through you, your worship. Tom rooms is a record classification system. That definitely helps us with our file retention and meet our legislative requirements for file retention periods. And certainly helps us access the documents we need quickly. For instance, responding to a Freedom of Information request. Having documents filed appropriately means we can find them. It's searchable. Tom rooms is it's like the label on the file folder. Whether that's an electronic file or a paper file. And for each type of document, the Tom room system tells us. What legislation affects that document and how long we must legally keep it. Some things we keep active and then move to inactive files to finish out its retention period prior to being. Destroyed. However, Tom rooms does not help with accessibility for the members of the public at all. It's an internal operational tool for us that. It helps us serve better, but it's not used by the public or by council. The Escribe meetings and the Escribe software, the training session on that won't take long. But it's very interesting piece. And you'll see if you look at our website under agendas, the first agenda posted is an HTML format. So it's much more accessible to people. With a variety of challenges, not just visually, because you can use a page reader to get through it. But also various literacy levels and expertise with technology. Because you're not required to scroll through hundreds of pages. You can look at the agenda and click. From a report back to the main agenda or from a bylaw back to the agenda without. Scrambling to try to keep up with the meeting or just being frustrated with all that scrolling, which requires. Some technological skill, good reading levels and good vision. So the Escribe component, when we do the training and counselors have their Escribe login, it's another step in. I guess advancing our processes and keeping up with the times to making sure we're accessible. The documents on the website that can be made accessible are on there. And there is a. Statement on both the agenda page and the bylaw page. Our. Our duty under the Accessibility for Ontarians with Disability Act. Requires that our website is accessible. That provincial legislation has to happen with or without a communication strategy. So it's a separate piece. It's going to happen. The website has to be accessible. And we that means we cannot just bring forward documents that are not accessible. You have to do something to create that accessibility. There is a statement on there that any of those documents can be requested. And we can send them in any way, in any format required by member of the public or council. So it does not hamper. Our. I guess the transparency of our meetings or the procedures that we follow. As required under the Municipal Act. So we're meeting that legislation as well and doing the best we can to keep the new information on there. And fill in and backfill as much as possible as we can get those documents accessible.
Thank you. As the other question for response, Coordinator Zettel, on the Intranet. Is that gone by way of the? The dinosaur or is that still relevant? Oh, yes, point of order, please.
No, I said it's gone by the way the Dodo bird.
Oh, yes, okay. Yeah, that that's a good point of order too. Coordinator settle to that inquiry.
Sorry, through you, Mayor. Yes, so we are looking at some kind of in-house solution. We we did have a price that came in through our RFP. But it was it was almost the same amount of price as the entire website. We were not comfortable with that. So we are looking for a, we are looking for a a more. An economy version of that and we'll get we'll get back to council when that. I know there's there's been a couple of issues that have come up where we were like, oh, we should use an Intranet for that or or something similar. So we are looking at solutions for that.
To be continued, I'm hearing. Okay, Counselor Hutchinson, you still have the mic.
Okay, so just a couple of follow ups to that. So with the Tom rooms, the files aren't necessarily going to be public files. But they'll help us organize previous files, right? So I guess with in the past, you know, if you couldn't access files or if you didn't know the situation. We always relied on our previous clerk, Mark Turner, with his hundred years experience. To go back and and pull from his memory some of the things or he would be able to put his hands on it. And I guess that's something we're going to miss, but hopefully with Tom rooms and. And our new clerk in her experience in this area that we'll be able to at least be able to access those files if we have to go through the office. If not, if not through like available to the public. So, yeah, so I think I think we'll come out of that okay. I just like to say, thank Jonathan for all his work on the website and where we are so far. Again, I'm excited about we're moving forward on that and and I think it's going to be great as we as we get it all into place. So thank you for that.
Well, thank you. All right, moving on then to Counselor Hergert.
Yes, thank you. So I have read the report. I've reviewed the the website. I I'm a little lackluster. I I don't really like just the black and white. I feel that that's, it doesn't give an idea or an impression of the beautiful waterways, as mentioned by Counselor Hutchinson. It doesn't speak to, you know, all the greenness around and how we want people to come and enjoy the outside. And I just see it's just black and white and. We're West Gray, so it doesn't even fit our name. I don't, I don't know. I just, I wish it was more colorful and inviting. I think that, you know, all the clarity for accessibility, it seems like it's whitewashed out. The the spirit of having a brand new website. I think that is the exciting part. I just don't see that it's enough to change, you know, to go from burgundy to black and white. It's the same for me. It doesn't, doesn't stand stand out as newish. I do have some very specific questions. If someone doesn't know what they don't know about a bylaw, do we have, do we have a pool enclosure bylaw? Well, for somebody who's never had a pool before, they're going to go search our website. Maybe we've got it up there. And I'm just curious how regular people of the public will access. How do we have record retention if we don't have bylaws for the last seven years online where people could access it? We're not inviting people to come into the office right now. They would just phone you, they would maybe fax the office and say what they need. Or send an email and we would just try our best efforts to get it. I think we actually owe a little more to the public on the bylaws. If they are bound by these bylaws, we need to have them online. You know, you know, Saturday afternoon, somebody goes to to buy a pool and they want to put it up that day. Who do they get a hold of?
Okay, so let's. Clerk Charback, please. Would you be able to respond to this?
Thank you. Through you, your worship. Absolutely. We're trying to get as many of the existing bylaws on as possible. And while we're adding the new ones that we're creating in an accessible format. We are adding as time allows, working back and working with the most commonly requested. Bylaws to make sure they're on there. There is a note on the website that they can call or email the clerk's office. And we can certainly get them the information they need if it's not on the website. So as much as we're we're working to get those on there. It is a process that requires a great deal of time. And in the interim, we can email, we can copy and large print. We we can do a variety of things to make sure that. We're still making that information available to the public. But there is a time lag between getting the older bylaws in an accessible format and on the website. So in the interim, we're doing the best we can to to serve, whether it's through a phone call or email. And working through it that way to meet the legislation.
Counselor Hergert, you still have the mic.
Yes, I'm actually not really satisfied. I guess I really would like to know how staff, what do you need? And this is maybe a question to our CIO. What do we need to do? What does, what do we need for staff time or resources? You know, this is supposed to be right now a an emergency period. And I feel like we have received. A great deal of reports that really just continue the business of West Gray. The alcohol policy we had even when it wasn't an emergency time period. Communication strategy, we've had a previous time even during this communicate emergency period. And I guess I'm just really left thinking, are we supposed to be in an emergency? Is there any extra staff or time that are not doing their regular things? You know, I, maybe I really am needing our CIO to tell me what the timeline or what staff need. To be able to get these bylaws online.
Okay, so let's let's deal with your question. Certainly, we're in a emergency situation. But there's also the balance of business continuity, which we're achieving. But in terms of the timeline for addressing how we can achieve these. Whether it's archive bylaws or just bylaws that that are important to our citizens. How can we achieve moving that along at a. A timeline that we know what that timeline would be? And could you respond to all of that, Madam CIO?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for the inquiry, Counselor Hert. I have no idea just how many bylaws this municipality has. And I do know that the majority of them up until the new ones are not accessible. So for staff to convert them, it is an incredible amount of work. And thank you, Madam Mayor, for for the clarity that we still have the business continuity of this corporation. That we are still, we're still responsible to run the corporation and the municipality, whether it's a state of emergency or during normal times. So staff have been quite busy putting together agendas so that we can have these sorts of meetings. And carrying on the normal course of business as best we can. I know that some bylaws, you know, that you can get two of them converted in a day. So, you know, I could do the math when I have the numbers and come back to council. I really do like Counselor. Counselor Hamilton's suggestion about an AMO delegation because we are not the only municipality that's struggling with. Providing all of our historical data in an accessible format by January twenty twenty one. So so with your indulgence, Counselor Hergert, I would take that away, speak with staff. And I will come back to you with what that could look like and what we'll what we'll need to do.
Counselor Hergert, and I just want to kind of summarize that. I know that was a discussion point that Counselor Hergert, sorry, that Counselor Hamilton had as well as yourself, Counselor Hergert. And it was the takeaway that our CIO would assess it and then bring back information to council in terms of timeline for. You know, the bylaw review and options to have those bylaws on our website. And also when we get to item seven, seven point one, Association of Municipalities of Ontario, fondly known as AMO. The deadline for a delegation request, I would like council to consider making that delegation request to deal with. Letting the provincial government know, you know, historical documents need to be accessible. And there's funding attached to that as well as a timeline. So let's have that that discussion in terms of. A means to an end on that. So I I think we're all on the same page in terms of we know that this information. Needs to be accessible to our citizens and the staff and council is striving towards that.
And I might just add that a number of years ago, the library. And I might just add that a number of years ago, the library was able to digitize and microfilm a great deal of local newspapers with some grant money and a concerted effort towards scanning and digitizing. So they might
To the point, yeah.
Yeah, so they might have some other method. You know, it's a library. They've had to catalog before. So I think that that might be a local, you know, just, they've already done it. They've already been there. To the point of council highlights and that communication, I would like to know what staff are working on. So here today, we have a committee of the hall, and we would imagine that some of these that have a recommendation to council next week come forward. However, there's longer projects that staff work on, and I think it would be helpful just to know that these items are coming. So not just items going to council, but just staff working on, you know, just a continual list of things that are being worked on. And I'm not trying to dig too deep into the woods. I just want to know for my own that I have research I need to do, things I need to make myself aware of, and the time that I would require for the same. You know, Thursday, Friday till Tuesday, it's not a lot of time. Maybe when staff have had two weeks on it, we get five days on it. So it is, you know, always just trying to better communication there. The online ticket
Council Hergert, I just want to say to that, be ready, as well as the rest of committee, or council sitting as committee, be ready. The Q2 report from our CAO is pending. And of course, you know that quarterly report will be addressing all the projects to date in terms of their status, whether they're completed, ongoing, where we're at with things. Are there any issues? Or they're moving along quite swimmingly? And how that all relates to our strategic plan. So the timing of your question is absolutely fine, that it will be identifying the projects and also the pending new business items and reports that are in the queue.
So my only last comment on this visual identity and not brand is that these promotional products, which comes towards the very end of the report, would be local products. I don't think that we just need another water bottle. I've got 30 water bottles. I think what we should be doing is supporting local businesses on this and asking who could come to us and present our logo on local items. So we have a lot of people that are snowbirds, that travel, and I think that this would be a great way to showcase our local products and be able to take them and distribute them and gift them in a different way that, you know, made in China with a West Grey logo doesn't quite get to. So I would like to encourage that we would have local products that have our promotional, you know, our name on it for promotional items. That's one thing. The other would be on page 22. Yes, page 22 of the report, page 81 in our agenda. There's a parks and playground. There's a picture of a park that is not in West Grey that I'm aware of. And I would like us to just stick to the things that are within West Grey. The pictures, I know that there was even one last website that had Photoshop. So I think we're beautiful enough, and I really want us to just have our own playgrounds. I'd be very proud of the water sources and the recreation and those type of things that we do already have. So I would like the pictures just to be limited to West Grey.
Well, thank you for that point, and definitely point taken on the Photoshop of the last evolution of that particular website. Anything further?
I do have one last question.
Go ahead, please.
There is a pickup truck running around with West Grey written on the side of it. Will this logo of West Grey be branded or patented or, you know, reserved in any way that it's only for us? Or if someone else sees West Grey, which is not actually our title, right? We are the municipality of West Grey. So if somebody just writes that on the side of their car and it looks like our logo, could be confusing to the public, but actually, do we have any recourse?
I'm going to go with Coordinator Zettel, please.
Yes, thank you through you, Mayor. Thank you for the question, Counselor Hergert. It's my understanding that the strategy does recommend that we do trademark our logo. I think it's an important thing just to give it some gravity. I think the second part, the other thing that you were talking about was the pictures outside of the pictures that are not of West Grey Parks, et cetera. I'm very sensitive to this and very aware of that. The picture that you see in the strat guide or in the communication strategy is a, it's a mock-up from our vendor. That's kind of the look that we approved. So that's not a picture that you would find on our site right now or ever. I think we're very cognizant of making sure that all of the images are are West Grey and only
Yeah, I think all of council feels the same way.
Yeah, absolutely. And the third point that you brought up was, thank you very much for bringing this up. I hadn't really considered that we should be using local promotional products. I'm not too sure how to facilitate that. But it's definitely valuable, and thank you for putting it on our radar. I think that tied in with Counselor Hamilton's concerns about making sure that we're using sustainable products and environmentally friendly products. I think that really does add a lot to that. So thank you very much for that.
Yeah, you know what? There's an ability, shop local, we certainly support that. And I know staff will find a way that we can, you know, do that outreach for the local products, for sure.
Okay, I do have one last question.
Yes, please.
Reviewed my list here. We have just come up with a property list that was owned by West Grey. I'm unable to find that on the new website. Is that there?
Madam CAO, can we do a follow-up for that? Counselor will do a follow-up, and that's something that we're looking for on the website anyway. So thank you for that. And it may just be in terms of how you're searching, or it may be that it's not there. I don't have, we'll do the research on that to find out and get that communicated out.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Counselor Townsend now.
Yes, two comments. The first one is financial and resource implications under this report state the business cards, however, will be replaced in one print order and will be coordinated through staff in the coming months. I'm concerned about budgetary costs because only two months ago, we went through and did significant reductions because we don't have flexibility to absorb things. So I'm wondering how we're going to do that. My second, my second comment has to do with, and I like the example of the pool bylaw, because I actually did that. We had to replace our pool. So I said, I'll go see if we have a bylaw, et cetera. So the first thing I did, though, was check and see if there was a requirement for one. And it says basically, municipalities may or may not have it. I looked, and we did have it. But what if I looked and it wasn't there? And I saw the first one that said it may or may not. We may have people that don't know it's there, and they should ask. So do people have to call every time? I'm really strongly disappointed that we have dropped data. I'll say that again. I understand the accessibility issue, but that leads me back to, should we have a new website that can't deal with our current? Or we've chosen not to do it? Keep it away when, in fact, we should put it up there as-is and work on accessibility and replace it when we're ready, no later than December 31st. To me, I don't see any reason why we don't transfer as-is instead of making more work for staff to answer calls and go researching to find out what's there, particularly since we lost our personal index called Mark, who would answer the question right away. And second of all, the people may actually be making mistakes in the sense of not obeying the bylaws because they don't know they're there because they can't find them, and they don't know they should call in. So my suggestion is either we convert them as-is and worry about the replacement as we convert them. And number two is that, is this the right time to actually do it if we're going to get into that kind of cost and can't get the grants in time? Can we really afford the conversion to the website at this point? And the logo change and all the cost it will bring. So I'll leave that as-is, but I still have a concern about it.
Keep in mind, we're getting that report from the CAO that will be addressing all of those points. But I thank you very much, Counselor Townsend.
But if we make a decision how to proceed, I think the comments that you just made are paramount to that. So it's, I realize there's a report coming, but I think they're looking, staff are looking for a decision today, and I'm concerned that I don't think we're prepared or have the information to make that.
Thank you. Counselor Shea, please.
Thank you. I'm going to change the subject briefly, because we are talking about communication and communication strategies. I just want to put something out there, and that is that I've had comments from three committees that I'm involved with, or the three committees that I know of, Accessibility, Sustainability, and Dark Skies, all of which see that part of their mandate includes education and outreach to the public. And yet, we have policies which don't allow any sort of communication at the committee level, that everything has to be vetted by either council or staff. So I would like the Communication Department, the CAO, and Mr. Zettel to just sort of think about that a little bit and see if there might not be some communication policy that would allow committees to engage in education and public outreach. I'm not looking for an answer right now and just put that onto the agenda for a future meeting.
Yes. That will happen.
Okay.
Anything further? Okay, I see. Yes, Counselor Shea, anything further?
No, that's all.
Okay. I'm not seeing any other hands up. So I'm going to go to Madam Clerk to read a motion, see if there's a mover and seconder, and we'll go from there.
Thank you. Through you, your worship. The recommendation is that the West Grey Corporate Communication Strategy and Visual Identity Guide be received, and further, that the Committee of the Hall recommends to council that council approve the Corporate Communication Strategy and Visual Identity Guide as components of the overall corporate communications policy.
Is there a mover for this motion? Counselor Shea, are you moving this motion?
Yes, I'll move that motion.
I'm looking for check marks for a mover and seconder. Is there a seconder for this motion? If so, signify with a check mark. Counselor Hutchinson, are you seconding this motion? Sorry for my time delay on that. Counselor Hutchinson, are you seconding? We're getting your mic unmuted.
Yeah, sorry. Yes, Counsel Hutchinson, yes, I'll second the motion.
Any questions or comments on the motion? I see Counselor Hergert's hand up.
Yes, I was hoping to move a motion to sever the two.
A Clerk Sherbeck, comment on that, please.
Through you, your worship. This motion has been moved and seconded. So at this point in time, it can be voted on, or there could be a motion to amend the main motion. But this motion is on the floor.
And respectfully, I did have my hand up before it was submitted.
No, I'm looking for mover and seconders with the check marks, and I made that clear. And I came forward to you as a, with a hand up for a question. So where are we at with your comment? Counselor Hergert, please.
Yes, so I would like to move a motion to sever the two. The first one would be that the report, West Grey Communication Strategy and Visual Identity Guide be received. And the second motion to be that the Committee of the Hall recommends council approve the Corporate Communication Strategy and Visual Identity Guide as components of the overall corporate communications policy.
Clerk Sherbeck, take us through this procedure.
Through you, your worship. Motion to amend the main motion can amend the main motion by removing the second paragraph. And then the second paragraph can be brought forward as the next main motion, if that works.
I would move that we delete the second part of the motion.
So I'd be looking for a seconder if there is one. Is there a seconder to Counselor Hergert's motion? And I'm looking for a check mark. Counselor Townsend, are you seconding Counselor Hergert's amendment?
Counselor Townsend, yes, I'm seconding that motion.
So within that, I can ask for comments or questions on the separation, or am I just calling the vote? Clerk Sherbeck, I'm calling the vote on this. All those in favor of separating the two items, please signify with a check mark. Those not in favor, with an X mark. Okay, so on this, I will start. Mayor Christine Robinson, I am not in favor of this motion. Counselor Townsend, state your name and how you're voting.
Counselor Townsend, in favor.
Counselor Hergert, state your name and how you're voting.
Counselor Hergert, yes.
Counselor Shea, state your name and how you're voting.
Counselor Shea, yes.
Deputy Mayor Hutchinson, state your name and how you're voting.
Deputy Mayor Hutchinson, in favor.
Counselor Hamilton, state your name and how you're voting.
Counselor Hamilton, yes.
Counselor Hutchinson, state your name and how you're voting.
Counselor Hutchinson, I'm just curious on what we're voting on here. Can I have it reread?
Yes, you certainly can. One moment, please.
Through you, your worship. The motion moved by Counselor Hergert, seconded by Counselor Townsend, is that the motion to receive the Communication Strategy and Visual Identity Guide and approve the Corporate Communication Strategy and Visual Identity Guide be amended to delete the second paragraph and receive only.
Okay, thank you. Yes, I can, I'll vote to accept that or agree.
Okay, motion does carry. All right. Is there anything further on this particular item that we need to deal with? Clerk Sherbeck, please walk us through that. And clear your dashboards, please.
Thank you. Through you, your worship. We'll now return to the main motion, which was moved by Counselor Shea and seconded by Counselor Hutchinson, which now, following the amendment, reads that the report, West Grey Corporate Communication Strategy and Visual Identity Guide be received, period.
Questions or comments on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify with a check mark. Those not in favor, please signify with an X mark. I will begin. Mayor Christine Robinson, I am voting in favor of this motion. Counselor Hutchinson, state your name and how you're voting.
Counselor Hutchinson, in favor.
Counselor Hamilton, state your name and how you're voting.
Counselor Hamilton, yes.
Deputy Mayor Hutchinson, state your name and how you're voting.
Deputy Mayor Hutchinson, in favor.
Counselor Shea, state your name and how you're voting.
Counselor Shea, yes.
Counselor Hergert, state your name and how you're voting.
Counselor Hergert, yes.
Counselor Townsend, state your name and how you're voting.
Counselor Townsend, in favor.
Motion carries. So I'm wondering, members of committee, I think this is the most appropriate time for me to stop because a clerk has a comment. Please proceed. No, thank you.
Sorry about that. Through you, your worship. The original recommendation that was amended and shortened to just receive the report also contained the second paragraph by which the Committee of the Hall would recommend that council approve the Communication Strategy and Visual Identity Guide. So if if it's council's pleasure, now would be an appropriate time if somebody moved and seconded that. If there's no mover or seconder, then there's no resolution.
Got it. And thank you for that procedure. Is there a mover for that motion? Counselor Shea, are you moving the motion?
Yes, Counselor Shea, I moved the motion.
Deputy Mayor Hutchinson, are you seconding the motion?
Deputy Mayor Hutchinson, I'll second the motion.
Questions or comments? Counselor Hamilton? Questions or comments, Counselor Hamilton?
Thank you, Mayor Robinson. So I can support this with the exception of, could we amend that one page where it speaks to buying lots of high glossy paper? Instead, could staff amend that either to delete that sentence? Or would staff feel comfortable committing to putting a sentence in there about opportunities for sustainable purchasing and sustainable products? So that's an amendment I'd be looking for in this document. I'm just looking for some feedback from staff about what, how we could phrase that.
Yes, and I'll go to the feedback from Madam C A O, and then return to see if we can, you're asking for the amendment of that one statement. Madam C A O, you're welcome. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Counselor Hamilton, thank you for that question. My preference would be that we remove that from this policy because what we're really talking about is how we do our procurement. And I think we'd be better off, the overall corporate approach to how we're purchasing, and just leave the communications, that, the communications piece.
Perfect. So as, thank you then. So as mover, Counselor Shea, are you okay with that?
Yes, I'm fine with that.
As a seconder, Deputy Mayor Hutchinson, are you okay with that?
Deputy Mayor Hutchinson, yes, I'll be fine with that.
So Clerk Sherbeck, you'll be able to address that in the motion somehow? Or is that just in the actual document? Oh, I'm hearing from staff, it's in the document, but I would like a comment from our clerk. Thank you.
Through you, your worship. My understanding of that is that the resolution to recommend that council approve strategy and guide just remain as it stands, and the issue of glossy paper or sustainable products be addressed through our procurement policy. And so just so everybody's clear on what they're voting on.
Okay. Thank you for that. Anything further, Counselor Hamilton?
Thank you, Mayor Robinson. So again, just clarify, I thought the direction from the C A O was to remove that one sentence. So I'd just like to clarify with that with our clerk, and then I do have one more question.
Go ahead, clerk.
So, that's okay. Through you, your worship. So, motion to amend?
Yes, please.
Moved by Counselor Hamilton? That the reference to glossy paper be removed? Or that the Communication Guide be amended by removing the sentence referring to glossy paper?
Perfect. May I just ask something procedurally? Could this be in the category of a friendly amendment, that we don't need to do the?
Absolutely.
As amended, like?
If they're, that we adopt the policy as amended by removing
The glossy paper reference?
The glossy paper reference, and put that all in the main motion. Is that? If the mover and seconder are content with that friendly amendment being added?
Let me try it. It sounds like a friendly amendment to me, and you've confirmed that. So I will check it out with Counselor Shea first. Are you agreeable to that?
Counselor Shea, I am agreeable.
Deputy Mayor Hutchinson, are you agreeable to that?
This is Deputy Mayor Hutchinson. I am in favor, that's why.
Okay, good. So Counselor Hamilton, anything further?
Well, thank you very much. Another question for the clerk would be, I know that our minutes are reflecting, not so much discussion, reflecting motions, is my understanding. So staff have, have informed us that they will report back on council highlights, and also report back on uploading bylaws, uploading agendas and minutes, and that kind of thing, those kinds of staff reports. So my question is, should that also be in a motion, and would that be a separate motion? I just, I'm not sure how to.
Oh, I see. In the minutes, yeah.
I think staff direction, and that would be listed in the, the minutes. We would have that, that's a follow-up within, correct?
Through you, your worship. Yes, there are, in this meeting, a couple of things that staff will be bringing back further information on. So either it was very clear direction, and if there's very clear direction, it's noted in the minutes. I think one of them was, I think some very simple follow-ups that staff would be doing anyway, that the C A O had referred to. So that will be noted in the minutes, if there's supposed to be an action taken. If it's significant direction to staff, it really should be in a resolution. But I do understand what you're asking, and yes, any direction that is from all of council, or a commitment by the C A O to bring back a report or to have a staff report back, will be identified in the minutes as an action item in the, in the meeting.
Great, thank you so much.
It will be identified in the minutes, and I could tell you, I think the C A O is already writing the, the report in her head.
Many thanks. I appreciate that clarity. Thank you, Mayor Robinson. That's everything.
Absolutely, absolutely. Let me just see. Yes, Counselor Hergert, please.
Yes, thank you. So just to carry on with the, the discussion there about what our promotional items would be, I think that is in direct conflict then with our procurement by law. I've been told at a meeting before that we could not set a parameter and say, we hope to garner promotional material from within, you know, within the boundaries of West Gray only. And that would contravene a procurement by law. So I'm actually not satisfied that it would cover off my concern of making sure we have local businesses providing local promotional products.
Madam C A O, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And Counselor Hergert, thank you for the request for clarification. My understanding of how, what I would take as direction from that particular part of our conversation is that any procurement that we would do for promotional products would go through the request for proposal process, and if, I wasn't thinking of local suppliers, I was thinking of local items. So if, if there's a local wood carver, for example, that put in a response to a request for proposal, and that was something that was deemed desirable, then we would be fine to, to go ahead and purchase that. But I, you're right, we cannot just pick and choose competing businesses because of their geographic location. So if that's not my, if my understanding of the idea is not correct, I would love that clarity. But I was understanding it to be, when we source out promotional products, let's not look for coffee mugs made overseas. Let's see if we can find items that are reflective of the industries and artisans of West Gray.
I agree with what you have just described, that it would be artisans and, and local from West Gray. How will that be captured in this report?
Through you, Madam Mayor. Actually, we would, we would not capture that in a communication strategy. Counselor Hergert, that would be captured through a procurement, through our procurement practices.
And you don't see a conflict with our procurement by law to say that it should be a product of West Gray? You don't see any conflict there?
The reason I don't see a conflict is because we would be going out through the competitive process, and that would be part of the R F P to say municipality is interested in securing vendors for promotional products, and, you know, our preference would be reflective of our municipality. So whatever bids we receive, as long as we're going through that transparent process, then we are following our procurement practices.
I just, I, I really do not want to see a China-West Gray copy. It doesn't make sense. So thank you.
Thank you. So we have a motion before us, duly moved and seconded. I'm going to call the question then. All those in favor of the motion, please signify with a check mark. Those not in favor, please signify with a X mark. So I will begin. Mayor Christine Robinson, I am in favor of this motion. Counselor Townsend, state your name and how you're voting.
Counselor Townsend, I am not in favor.
Counselor Hergert, state your name and how you're voting.
Counselor Hergert, yes.
Counselor Shea, state your name and how you're voting.
Counselor Shea, yes.
Deputy Mayor Hutchinson, state your name and how you're voting.
Deputy Mayor Hutchinson, in favor.
Counselor Hamilton, state your name and how you're voting.
Counselor Hamilton, yes.
Counselor Hutchinson, state your name and how you're voting.
Counselor Hutchinson, in favor.
Motion does carry. So we've completed this report now. I've got an indication from the clerk, that is the case. And I'm wondering if committee would like to take a lunch break for half an hour, returning at quarter to, quarter to two. Would that be good? I'm seeing a lot of thumbs up and check marks. So let's recess, and we will reconfere, or reconfirm, sure, that too. We will reconvene at quarter to two, and I would really like that all members of council are present at that time, and so we can begin. I thank you all very much. Enjoy your lunch. Welcome back, everyone. We have reconvened our June 30th Committee of the Hall meeting. Members of council sitting as committee, could you just put your check mark up? So I know that you're all here, one, two, three, four, five. I'm waiting on Counselor Hamilton. Thank you. What am I waiting on? Counselor, I think we're all here. Counselor Shea, I'm waiting on Counselor Shea. Administrative Assistant Glazier, can you just confirm that Counselor Shea is also present before I begin? Okay, one moment.
It looks like he's not present currently.
Okay. I'll just give him another minute, please, committee. Could you mute me for one moment? Hello, members of council sitting as committee. I just wanted to let you know that Counselor Shea is coming back into the meeting. So just one moment, please. And if you could all clear your dashboards, I know you're all here. Is he there?
Yes, he's just joined.
Thank you very much. Okay, welcome back to our reconvened Committee of the Hall meeting, June 30th. Counselor Shea, I note that you are now here. Thank you very much. We are moving on to item 6.3, Permanent Dog Tags and Yearly License Renewal. And I believe our Director of Finance and Treasure will be addressing the presentation portion of it. Director Maiten, please.
Yes, thank you, your worship. So we've got a proposal here to move to a permanent dog tag rather than issuing, it would still be renewed annually. We just would not actually mail out tags annually. So that once you have your tag number, you would continue to have that same tag number. We're not proposing a change to the actual dog fees. We are experiencing some cost increases on the canine control side. The contract for our dog catcher has increased. So we're not, some of the savings for not purchasing tags, and the not having to mail out all of the tags every year might, you know, help offset some of those increases. But we're thinking it would still be a revenue-neutral proposition. But we are hoping that it would provide a bit more efficiency into the process for, for issuing the dog tags. But if there's any questions, I'd be happy to try to entertain them.
Great, and thank you for, for the presentation, and to you and Administrative Assistant Glazier for the report. Well done. I, I think this is a great innovation. It's moving West Gray forward, and it's a nod to sustainability and being eco-friendly, so that it's not a repeat on the dog tags on a yearly basis. I, I think it's a streamlined process. So pleased with this. Keep, keep it up with all these great ideas coming. Any questions on the staff report? Seeing none, is there, well, first of all, Madam C A O, would you read the recommendation?
Thank you. Through you, your worship. The recommendation is that the Committee of the Hall endorses the recommendation by staff to switch dog tags to a permanent tag system with annual license fees. And further, that Committee of the Hall, or that council, Committee of the Hall recommend to council to amend by law number 87, 2009, Part II, Section 2B, to reflect the Tag for Life system.
Thank you. Counselor Hamilton, are you moving this motion?
Yes, Mayor Robinson. It's Counselor Hamilton, I move the motion.
Counselor Townsend, are you seconding this motion?
Counselor Townsend, yes, I'm seconding the motion.
Questions or comments, beginning with Counselor Hergert?
Thank you. I do have a question. It says that the implementation would be January 1st of 2021. I was curious, would that allow an opportunity for people to start renewing next year? Or if somebody that has dog tag number one, will they be allowed to carry on with dog tag number one and just pay the new fee?
Director Maiten, please.
Yes, I believe we're looking at the existing tags that they have in 2020. Would continue to be renewed for, for 2021. But we're just kind of working through some of the, they are noted with a year on them. So we may need to reissue new tags. Currently, we have tags that actually have the year pre-printed on them every year. So we'll probably have to have new tags issued for 2021 without the year, just with the tag number and noting West Gray.
So then I also have a question about the mailings. Is it possible that we could just add this on to their regular tax bill and not send another, like a different mailing?
So they, the tag itself, if they don't pick it up at the office, would need to be, especially in light of, right now, looking at this year, we're obviously not open to the public. So they're having to, we're having to mail more tags out this year. But normally, in a, in a, in a normal year, they would, the majority of them, pick up their tags. Any delinquent tags, once the, if they're still outstanding, are rolled to the taxes. And then, once they're paid on their tax bill, then again, we mail out the tag. If they haven't actually been at the counter, that we could give them the tag.
So I'm just curious, how will you advise people that this is changing? This is different than the way it's ever happened before. So you just mail out a letter, you know, maybe in the next month, to say we're changing the way we do next year?
Yeah, we can include it depending on how full our tax insert is. The newsletter that goes in with our tax bills, we can put some information in there. Also, when we send out, we send out a renewal notice in, in January. We can provide some verbiage on there as well, advising people of the switch to the, to the permanent tag system. If not, an insert with that renewal notice, just to draw their attention to the, the fact that it is now a Tag for Life system.
We can do like a news, and we can do a news and notice, whether it's a form of a, like a media release, but a, just a, information to citizens, we'll get the communication out.
Exactly, yeah. All of our different methods of, you know, social media. Exactly, yeah. All of our different methods of, you know, social media, but yeah, we'll work with the coordinator of the, for communications to, to work on, on how we roll out the plan and time it so that it's, we don't want to do it, you know, you want to time it so that it's in time with the, as we're gearing up to the renewals, not just to confuse them, this year, it's, it's still the same old system. So it just work on that timing and, and the staging of the release of all the information.
So any of the people that were consulted, do any of them just charge it to the taxes and people know and understand? I mean, is that, is that where we're getting to for like year two of this program, being an ongoing?
I don't know that any of the, if we asked if any of them just automatically just added as a charge onto the tax bill. It's nice to keep them a bit separate until they're, and then only needing to roll over arrears that are collectible in a like manner of taxes. But otherwise, you know, it's nice to have them sort of separate, like accounts receivable and water billing, so it doesn't sort of, it keeps the tax bill clear.
Guess what, I just want, I would just like to add, thank you, Director Maiten. We've got tenants that have canines, so, you know, the, the, the program is something where we're looking for issuing the dog tags and then receiving the money for that. And then utilizing that money for our canine service.
Yes, yeah, good point with the tenants, yeah.
Yeah.
I was just curious if we could take it one step further and make it actually something that we barely have to touch, right? That if a dog is going to live in a certain place, and I appreciate the tenant situation, but we would know that too, right? We would know potentially that it is being rented out. The bill goes to somebody other than.
We, we don't have very good information on tenants if they're very transient and move around. It's not information that comes from the, the tax system, so it's, you know, it's very, you have to do a little more rigor trying to, to track down. And that's usually the ones we have to send the canine control officer out if they are delinquent in, in picking up their tags.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we, Madam Clerk, we had a mover and a seconder?
Thank you, yes, through you, Your Worship. Moved by Counselor Hamilton and seconded by Counselor Townsend. That committee of the hall endorsed the recommendation by staff to switch dog tags to a permanent tag system with annual license fees. And that committee of the hall recommend to council to amend by law 87, 2009, to reflect the Tag for Life system.
All those in favor of the motion, please signify with a check mark. Those not in favor, please signify with an X mark. Mayor Christie Robinson here, I am in favor of the motion. Counselor Hutchinson, state your name and how you're voting.
Counselor Hutchinson in favor.
Counselor Hamilton, state your name and how you're voting.
Counselor Hamilton, yes.
Deputy Mayor Hutchinson, state your name and how you're voting.
Deputy Mayor Hutchinson, in favor.
Counselor Shay, state your name and how you're voting.
Counselor Shay, yes.
Counselor Hergert, state your name and how you're voting.
Counselor Hergert, yes.
Counselor Townsend, state your name and how you're voting.
Counselor Townsend in favor.
Motion carried. We're moving now, oh, please clear your dashboard, I will do the same. We are now moving on to item 6.4, IPW West Gray Bridge 17 Concession 4 NDR Status Report. Director Shurinsky, please.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Just give me one second.
No problem.
Okay, then, essentially, Your Worship members of council, before you, I have a report, essentially in summary. Bridge 17 experienced a bridge deck failure on June the 19th. And on, essentially, last Tuesday, I engaged trit engineering to inspect the bridge. And essentially, they, in turn, also engaged Dixon and Associates to come in and inspect the bridge. So essentially, there was a, a bridge deck failure and the boards that comprise of the deck, basically, when a truck was parked on it, it broke. And so, in summary, I had them inspect that bridge, I had them inspect Bridge 46. And what I have before you is an inspection report and a recommendation to essentially defer the funds from the Structure 46 project in order to repair Structure 17, as well as continue on with the pre-engineering and so forth for Bridge 46, so that that project continues to move forward as well.
Great. Anything further, Director, at this point?
At this point, I don't really have anything further. I mean, as far as the actual, I mean, the report essentially summarizes everything and has inspection photos in there of the damage that was incurred to the bridge deck. And also, I can add that the traffic counts in that area are approximately, I believe they're in the range of 100 to 200 cars a day. And essentially, the way that the report is written with the recommendation, it would, it would enable council or committee to recommend to council that Structure 17 could be repaired this year.
Thank you for that. I do know that this is a well-used bridge and contributes to the, the traffic flow of within our community. I also know that with regard to our agricultural sector, this bridge is used as well. And I received calls in terms of timeframe for the repair and getting the bridge opened. So thank you very much for acknowledging that bridge needed immediate closure and the, the timeframe to get it repaired and with the engineer's information. So just thank you very much overall, Director. Okay, any questions? All right, couple of questions. Counselor Townsend, please.
Yes, a question for Director Shurinsky. What would happen, in your opinion, from a traffic perspective, if we didn't repair the bridge and just had the other go around? The one that's used right now for the detour? What do you think the impact would be? And I ask, should be completely transparent, I ask because we've talked about, at some point, we're going to have to pick, as I was reminded, you know, the, the low hanging fruit and some bridges along, or assets along the way, because we're going to have issues with trying to maintain 106. So I'm curious, now knowing the volume, right, the, the question really becomes, what do you think the impact would be? And would it be advisable, do we have criteria, you know, to measure against that would tell us which ones we should consider for closure?
Director?
Well, through Your Worship, Counselor Townsend, I believe the immediate impact and receiving phone calls, have been receiving phone calls ever since we went through the bridge closure process on Friday. And residents are very concerned with respect to ambulance and EMS service in that area with the bridge closure, that it would take longer. So that's one impact. The other impact is that we would send, as traffic is headed through our detour at the moment, we would likely have to maintain 30th side road a little more frequently with respect to the amount of traffic that it will then get. And it would be an inconvenience to the, to the residents that live on either side of that bridge. There are, I think there are, there are nine residents that live on the west side of the bridge. And there are 10 residents that live on the east side of the bridge. And so, the phone calls and emails that I've received are that they really would like the bridge repaired. So that they, as they use the bridge every day. So that, or that's the direct impact with respect to the residents. And essentially, of course, the EMS in the area.
Okay, thank you. That was my only question.
Counselor Hergert, please.
Is there any concern from our fire department or from our police department with respect to this bridge?
Director Shurinsky?
Through Your Worship, I've, through our process, they're aware that the bridge has been closed. They haven't essentially wrote back or have verbalized any concerns at the moment. But I, I haven't succinctly requested of them what the impacts would be if that bridge was not repaired. Sorry, yeah, that was it.
Anything further, Counselor Hergert?
Yeah, I'm just noting that there definitely is access through both ways, east and west. And I'm also looking for a, a list that was asked of council a while back about what bridges, what's our top 10 in all of West Gray that needs to be dealt with. I feel like we're over here firefighting and we should be in the fire prevention. We should, we have to get on top of these bridges, meaning we close, we finance, we, we have to do this. Even during our bridge discussion at budget, we said, oh, okay, well, actually, there's a different one burning faster. There's a different one that is broken since we talked about it last week. So this isn't going away. And really, I'm asking, I'm going to ask something different of this bridge. I, I don't want this bridge to be repaired. I think that this bridge needs to be the starting point, the catalyst of us making significant, you know, responsible decisions about our budget. And this bridge is just another bridge that we are having to deal with and say, it's closed. And what will be the next one? So I'm looking at fire and police, and if we can get fire and police and ambulance to these locations and residents still have an opportunity either direction, it might not be their preference, it might have to be a go around. We, as council, need to take this responsibility very seriously. And I am second asking for that list to come forward immediately, urgently, about what bridges in all of West Gray need our top focus. This is just pushing off another bridge till next year. We don't have just one or two bridges we have to get to. We have 106. So if we talk about asset management, that's not waiting till they're all broken. That is fixing and repairing so that they prolong the lifespan. I am prepared today to say, I'm sorry, we can't fix this right now. We will have to entertain it in our next budget. And I am not prepared at this moment to push off another project to 2021 and commit all of our resources before we even get to the budget of next year. I am prepared today to say no to this bridge. We have to come up with a comprehensive plan that we're not just pushing another bridge off. We've got to buckle down. Thank you, council, for your time, but I am imploring that we need to start somewhere.
Counselor Hutchinson, please.
Yeah, Counsel Hutchinson here. Actually, I'm, I'm sort of thinking that we're lucky that we can prepare this bridge. The bill is $300,000, which, if we're looking at replacing bridges, we're looking at a million dollars plus. So my thoughts are, let's fix it. Like it's, we know that this is going to happen, that as we go along and we try to get a handle on our bridges, that there are going to be other ones that are going to fail. And if we can fix them, I think we fix them. But if they need to be replaced, then we have to look at how valuable is that bridge? So this, I, I was interested when I looked at this bridge, that it's one of our steel beam bridges. I was, I was sort of surprised that they use a plank decking, a wood decking. I didn't know if that's a standard thing. And I'm wondering how many other bridges we have that are like this in, in West Gray? Because obviously, if the steel is okay and the abutments are okay, then fixing the deck is, is a minor compared to replace the whole bridge. So I wonder if our director has a handle on how many of these bridges like this that we have that we might be looking at fixing in the future.
Director Shurinsky, could you comment?
Absolutely. Through, Your Worship, Counselor Hutchinson, yes, we've, I don't have an exact number of how many wooden bridges that we have, where we've got a wooden deck installed over a steel beam structure like that. But in this instance, I believe some of the wear and tear on this bridge as well is, is from larger vehicles that exceed the tonnage for that particular bridge. That's also something that we are constantly battling with, with respect to perhaps larger vehicles that aren't from this area and so forth, that perhaps might be traveling through. And we've, we have heard reports or have got word that that is, that is happening and did happen on that road. Nevertheless, I can get back to council with respect to how many wooden bridges that we do have, like this one. And that, lastly, yes, to your point, there is a relatively clear scope of work here with respect to this repair. And would, you know, essentially, enable council to repair one bridge while they continue to work on another one.
Thank you for that. Counselor Hutchinson, further?
No, so that, so my, my thoughts are, I'd like to see us fix this bridge, realizing that, you know, we have others that have to be fixed and we're going to have other, other ones going to pop up. But I would like to see us go ahead and fix it, given the, the cost involved. And, and we do need to put money in their bridges, for sure. And we need to keep moving forward, rather than, I, I hope, like, think that we don't have to close more bridges as we're going forward. But maybe somewhere along the line, we will have to. So that's it for me, thanks.
Okay, Counselor, yes, Counselor Hamilton, please.
Thank you, Mayor Robinson, and thank you for this information and for the solution. I think this, this solution makes a lot of sense. And I also seen the report that there'll be some investment in the bridge in Glenelg that had been planned, that there will be some steps we can take this year, so it's shovel ready next year. So it seems like a good compromise and a good managing of the situation. So thank you for that. Also, thank you for communicating with council so quickly, much appreciated. In terms of bridge closers, we, we do have a study and a report that outlines which bridges might be suitable for closure based on things like EMS and traffic and transportation network. And I note that this bridge is not one of those that's recommended for closure from that consultant. And I think that's, that's how we would make those kinds of decisions, would be with that kind of information. So I would, I would like to move and support the recommendation as presented by staff. Thank you, Mayor Robinson.
Thank you very much for that. Clerk Sherback, do I now need to get a seconder on that? So that would be what I would do, but I want to double check. Okay, on the approval of the recommendation to move ahead with the bridge, we do have a mover. Is there a seconder? Deputy Mayor Hutchinson, are you seconding this motion?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Robinson. It's Deputy Mayor Hutchinson, and yes, I will support the repair. Thank you.
As the seconder?
Yes, as the seconder, I'm sorry.
Questions or comments on the motion? Counselor Townsend?
Yes, Counselor Townsend, thank you. Counselor Hergert raises some good points, and I'd like to just go down there while we can. The, the first one is, do you know what the new life expectancy of that bridge would then be, Director?
Director Shurinsky?
Through Your Worship, essentially, the, a tiny bit of background here. The existing decking that was on there was replaced in 2005. So it, it lasted approximately 15 years. So, but with this particular bridge, even though it's a wooden deck bridge as well, we're expecting to get at least 20 years or 25 years out of it. Because essentially, we were uncertain if the wood that was put down in the first installation back in 2005 Because essentially, we were uncertain if the wood that was put down in the first installation back in two thousand and five was pressure-treated wood and if it was treated. And secondly, as the existing structure was coated with surface treatment, you'll note in the inspection photos that the surface treatment cracked apart, and that also held water in there. So I understand the engineers looking at a different surface treatment on this structure so that it would last longer. But at this point, that's what I can tell you as far as the bridge deck on at this point.
Council Townsend, I just want to double check with the clerk. Are these questions appropriate before the motion? I'm just asking you in terms of the procedure. These, I'm thinking they're in line, but I'm just double checking with you that this line of questioning before the motion, I don't wanna lose sight of that motion. So checking with your expertise, if you will.
Thank you through you, your worship. With the recommendation moved and seconded, there is a motion on the floor. So the discussion needs to be germane to that motion, to that topic. And it, it has been, so they're appropriate.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the latitude, Council Townsend. You still have the mic.
Okay, the second follow-up is, we've seen before where we've used money or dedicated money for the, the next year, maybe not intentionally, and it's come back to haunt us. And then, of course, in our, our budget in April, when we finalized it, we reduced money from the bridge budget. So that's gonna create a challenge. The other thing is, if, if we just repair it as is, and we don't take a consideration for closure, then my fear is, we are just doing exactly what councils have done in the past and continued to do everything they could to maintain every bridge. And the problem with that is that we end up with a mortgage on our assets that we cannot manage, cannot afford. So again, another question for Director Shrinsky is, if the evaluation of the bridge was done now, because when you do asset management, you evaluate it based on its current condition, right? So Council Hamilton was absolutely right, that the bridge wasn't on the list of potential closures because it wasn't damaged, it was functional, and it rated accordingly. How would that rating change if you went and analyzed the bridge today?
Are you even able to respond to that because of not being a bridge engineer? But I leave that with you.
Well, I can, I will answer the question in a fashion where, I mean, you're asking me a question as though I, I would have to, where would this fall into our asset management program if the bridge didn't exist? Because if it's, if it's closed and it's exist, and it's in its current state and it's closed, to, and, and it, there's no traffic, you know, going over that bridge any longer and so forth. It would essentially, it would fall further down the list, I would submit, just like the other bridges that are closed. So this is an opportunity for council to repair a bridge. The steel beams are still good, the bridge is still good, this is an opportunity to repair the deck and open a bridge this year and continue to work on the bridge that we were originally working on, Bridge Forty-Six, and continue with the engineering and any other work that I can get completed this year in preparation to continue on with that bridge in twenty twenty-one.
Okay, so if, if we accept this, we're really saying, we'll maintain the hundred and six bridges as of today, as, as we've already got. We will use three hundred, so we'll move the three hundred thousand into next year's budget because we already committed to doing Bridge Forty-Six, and we need to do it based on its condition. That's my understanding. If I'm wrong, could you please correct that, Director?
No, absolutely. Through your worship, our Council Townsend, you're absolutely right. We, the budget that was set earlier this year was to work on Structure Forty-Six. And essentially, that bridge does require work, it certainly does. However, given the situation that was before me, I opted to essentially get the same engineer to have a look at Bridge Forty-Six in order to come to council with, and with options. And, and based on, on the information that I received, I prepared the recommendation for you today. To also answer your question about priority with respect to asset management, this doesn't necessarily, by fixing this particular bridge, does not necessarily declare that all hundred and six bridges are, that council is, by fixing this one, by virtue of fixing this one, you're going to commit to fixing every single, single bridge that you've got. I don't believe that's the case. Council has to review these issues as they come up. Council will likely be in a similar situation in the future. Should there perhaps might be another bridge that receives some sort of damage like this one, where these challenges will be before council again. So our asset management guide is there, it's there to base our decisions on and so forth. I do understand that. However, council does have the authority and the right to prioritize things as they see fit.
Anything further, Council Townsend?
Yeah, I just wanna clarify, I wasn't saying we are committed to it. I'm saying as of today, we're doing that, and that's fine. My last point is, I think council needs to realize that we need to spend our money wisely. If we spend it here, that's fine. But I think going forward, we really need to get that priority list, you know, one to whatever. And those are the ones we have to work on, whether it's asking for grants, whether it's putting it in the budget. I think that has to be our focus and not go outside that. Otherwise, we are never going to get a handle on this. That's all. Thank you.
Council Hergert.
Yes, thank you. I'm curious about how much money will we need to allocate for asset management on this bridge for the next twenty years, fifteen to twenty years of the decking? How much will we be putting away every year to maintenance and repair this bridge?
Just your worship for clarification. Council would like me to answer what the budget would be for operations and maintenance for this specific bridge moving forward after we're done repairing the deck. Is that clear?
That is correct, yep.
Essentially, we would continue to have our OSUM inspections done every two years on our structures. And we would continue with our bridge maintenance program with respect to deck clearing and cleaning and vegetation control and minimum maintenance standards. As far as money, I mean, that's operating dollars, so I, I don't necessarily have a per-bridge dollar figure. But it would, it would essentially be maintained just like all of our other bridges. I don't foresee any other at this particular point in time until the bridge is completely rehabilitated. I don't see any other capital money being spent on this particular bridge.
So my question really originates in asset management. And if we are building or fixing, repairing, we should have a cost per year as to how much it takes to maintain. So if I buy a car, I'm gonna know how much fuel, you know, if I drive more than the kilometers, then I, I don't, you know, it doesn't, it's not as cheap to operate. My question is, we are in the middle of an asset management Plan Two Point O, which should give us a number as to how much it costs to repair and maintain this bridge. So if we're buying a good and we don't know how much it costs every year to service, I have concerns there. I also, back to my other point, was that we have a list. That list should come to us so that we don't have any political will or pull in any direction on what bridge first. So this is just another whim, you know, we had a closure, we've gotta fix it. Well, that's a pretty hasty decision. How much is it going to cost, I feel, is a valid question. And if we're really committing next year's monies for budget to a project, I think we need to look at the whole budget for next year and not do a one-off here, one-off there. Because as Counselor, as Counselor Townsend mentioned, we're doing no better. We are firefighting one fire at a time, and it's costing us. When does the plan come? And I'm asking for a date on that. When is this bridge plan of the top five, top ten bridges, when would that be available?
Well, I understand that I have a, I can get back to council with an exact timeline. I understand that I'm, before I could provide the comprehensive list of all of the bridges in priority of their condition, before I could get that to council, this situation occurred. So I am committed to getting the, encompassing, the comprehensive bridge list to council so, for their consideration. And we can move on from there.
Anything further, Council Hergert?
Yes, I do have something further. Is there any consideration giving, given to weight limits with any bridge within West Gray that has a BCI, Bridge Condition Index, under X number, whatever that number is? Is there any consideration to putting a weight limit on those bridges?
Yes, we can, we constantly, through our OSUM inspections and so forth, we will adjust the tonnages on the bridges as per the engineer's inspection. So if a condition of a bridge, for example, is starting to deteriorate and it's posted at a certain weight limit, then we'll continue to reduce that weight limit so that we can continue to use the bridge but at a much, but with lighter traffic. And so that is, that is considered every time a bridge is inspected.
Thank you.
Thank you. The motion has been moved and seconded. I'm calling the vote on the motion. All those in favor signify with a check mark, those with an X mark. I will begin. Christine Robinson, Mayor here, I am voting in favor of the motion. Counselor Hutchinson, state your name and how you're voting.
Counselor Hutchinson, in favor.
Counselor Hamilton, state your name and how you're voting.
Counselor Hamilton, yes.
Deputy Mayor Hutchinson, state your name and how you're voting.
Deputy Mayor Hutchinson, in favor.
Counselor Shea, state your name and how you're voting.
Counselor Shea, yes.
Counselor Hergert, state your name and how you're voting.
Counselor Hergert, no.
Counselor Townsend, state your name and how you're voting.
Counselor Townsend, not in favor.
Motion carried. So now we are moving on to item seven, which is new business. We'll begin with seven point one. The Association of Municipalities of Ontario, fondly known as AML, that is their acronym, deadline for delegation requests. I do wanna say, members of council sitting as committee, I would look to you to support a delegation for infrastructure funding for our roads, bridges, and culverts. We have number of bridges, number of kilometers, seven hundred fifty kilometers of road. We've got asphalt, tar and chip, gravel, we've got, is it ninety-nine bridges, I believe? We've got a fair number of culverts. So I'm looking at my colleagues to support an AML delegation to deal with infrastructure funding. It's certainly a comment that I, I discussed with MP Alex, Alex Ruff, MPP and Associate Minister of Energy, Bill Walker, in terms of funding for our community to, you know, assist in the vibrancy. And certainly during COVID, it would be of a, of a benefit. So I'm looking at that opportunity for AML. I'm also suggesting that Counsel Hamilton brought forward another interesting one, which was making our historical documents more accessible on our, you know, whether it's on our website, et cetera, and funding available. That would make for another interesting delegation request. So, so I'm wondering, let's deal with those two and then see if there's anything further. So on the first one, I don't know why my check mark was there. I apologize. It must be leaning on my computer. In terms of the first one, looking for funding for infrastructure, is there, if you're in favor of that, would you mind giving a check mark or a thumbs up? Oh, we'll look for both of those. Okay, thank you. We'll bring that one forward. Now, on Counselor Hamilton's idea of making the historical, historical documents more accessible, looking for funding and bringing that forward as an AML delegation. If you like that idea, would you use a check mark or a thumbs up? I think both are fine. Okay. Madam CAO, we've got those two recorded. And I'm looking for the possibility of other delegation requests. So if you could clear your dashboard, other than Counselor Townsend, with your hand up, please.
Yeah, I'm very disappointed in this process. I don't know how many we're actually entitled to have or we reasonably expect to get. But if we're only gonna get the two, then I think we should have discussed all the topics before we go there.
There's no, there's no limit, Counselor? There's no limit, so you just put your requests in.
We expect to get, and particularly in this format, is there any idea yet?
Well, we would put all of our, our requests forward and see how we need to deal with them. There's no limit in terms of, you're capped at three. It's the, putting our submissions forward. And today's the deadline, I believe. Is that correct, Madam CAO?
Yeah, and that's my other observation. I don't know why we leave it right to the very end. In my notes that I submitted back on the agenda, I suggested that we start, if we don't have one, something called an annual event or activity calendar that actually says, for example, we know this is coming up the end of June for AML, let's start the discussion, you know, in April or May, not the last minute, so we kinda have to rush through it. Anyway, we'll leave that on the table. But I really do believe, we do that for quite a few things, and it does, it does bother me that we leave it to the last minute.
Okay, I, no, fair enough. But I do wanna say that an email was sent out to members of council and also staff in terms of bringing ideas forward for delegation requests. I don't believe, and I'm going to put it over to Madam CAO, whether any comments were received. So I take this as another opportunity to have the discussion before the deadline. And it just so happens that we're having a meeting on that day, so it kinda works out perfect as, as far as I'm concerned. But, but Madam CAO, were there any responses for the email?
Through you, Madam Mayor, to members of committee, I did not receive any responses. However, what we need to submit by the deadline today is the, the proposal. And what gets approved is what gets flushed out later. So we would let council know what we're working on post-approval.
Counselor Townsend.
Okay, so obviously, my suggestion is gonna go back to Canassist and Hydro.
Okay, please continue.
When we saw the, the compensation organizational review, it was interesting to see the, the difference in the sense of population versus budgets. And I truly believe the reason that some of those are so much higher budget, even though lower or roughly the same, is because they have either industry, commercial, recreation, whatever. They have attracted those kind of businesses and activities to their region. And we don't seem to be doing very well at that. And I think that's part of the, part of the issue. So we're, we're basically relying on our residential and agricultural areas to sort of beef that up. And frankly, I don't think that's enough. We have this opportunity, if the numbers are still correct for Canassist, you know, there would be a nice windfall to us annually as revenue. And we really, really need to push for that. And somehow, we have to convince either the provincial or federal governments, and AML is one way to get at the, the provincial, is that we truly need some activity. And is there anything that the Energy Minister and Associate Minister can do to expedite the issue we have? Because I'm, I've not heard an update in almost a year, and the trick is, it was left with them. And if we do that, it won't happen in a reasonable time. And by the time Canassist is ready to come here, we won't be. And that is something we really, really need to address.
Great. Well, let's call, let's do consensus on that one. If you're in favor of this being submitted as an AML delegation, use a thumbs up or a check mark. Okay, it's another item. Okay, it's another item. Thank you, Councilor Townsend. So if you could clear your dashboard, members of committee, is there anything further? Councilor Hutchinson, sorry. Time delay on your name there. Oh, okay, so let's clear dashboard. Councilor Hutchinson, yes, please go ahead.
Yeah, just to further on that, I think, I think it's good to continue to pursue that, but we have to understand and realize that the whole cannabis marijuana situation is up in limbo just because of the sales, not what they expected and whatnot. So I think, you know, government's dragging their feet because I think the industry is, is not sure where we're going with this. So I mean, we can't put all our eggs in one basket. I think we need to look at other areas also to, to create tax revenue. But understanding that we do have a lot of housing coming our way. And so I think we need to support that too. But anyways, just to comment on that.
Well, thank you very much for that. Councilor Hamilton, please.
Thank you, Mayor Robinson. Just a thought bubble. At one point, the provincial government was suggesting that they would be eventually banning organics from going into the landfill. I'm not sure if it's still on that flight path. I know. We would, we too, as West Gray, we want to find ways of diverting organics from the landfill. So it could be a question for our Public Works Director if he has more information about that. But I guess the gist of my question is. At AML, we could be asking for more resources, support, money, plans to help the rural communities divert organic waste. It seems to be more easily achievable in the cities where they have more density and they can have the green bins. It's a little easier for them. I think we need a different strategy for the rural communities and that would be the crux of the delegation.
Okay, I think that's another very interesting one. And I'm seeing Madam CIO nodding her head. So the way we're doing this is we'll entertain this one. Is this something that you would like to see put forward as a request to AML? If so, check mark it. If not, X mark it. All right, it is going in for a request. So if you could.
Thank you.
Oh yeah, well, thank you to all members of council participating in this. If you could please clear your dashboard. Councilor Hergert, please.
Several years ago, I sat on the library board and at that time, there was a discussion between the Ontario Library Association, OLA, and the Ministry of Education to overlap resources, especially books. But today we speak of resources being technology as well. I'm curious if there may be some provincial money for libraries or the expansion of internet, you know, hookups, hotspots, those kinds of things, especially prior to school restarting in a modified setting. It might allow an opportunity for our three libraries as well as our three public schools to be able to interact more closely, as well as sharing the resources that the province already utilizes for education. So I think that this year might be a year that, that there may be some education money that flows outside of schools. And I, at that rate, I would be inquiring.
Okay. If you're in favor of this one, put a check mark up. If you're not in favor, put a next mark up. Okay, it's good. Is there anything further from our council sitting as committee? And I note that Councilor Hutchinson still has a check mark up. Just wondering if he needs to clear that. Okay. Is there any other items? So I think Madam Clerk, just looking at the dashboard, do you just want a motion to receive all of these or overall? What is your pleasure on this procedurally?
Thank you through you, your worship. I would recommend that committee consider a motion to direct the CIO to proceed with the AML delegation request as directed. And just for clarification, I have five items. One, infrastructure funding for roads, bridges, and culverts. Two, funding for bringing archival documents into an accessible format. Three, can assist in hydro. Four. Funding to assist rural communities to divert organic waste. And the fifth one, funding for schools and library collaboration.
Yes.
Just as a quick summary.
Yes. Is, Councilor Hergert, are you moving that motion with your check mark?
Yes, I am.
Councilor Townsend, are you seconding that motion?
Yes, I am seconding the motion.
On questions or comments, I know we had a good discussion. All those in favor then signify with a check mark if you're, yeah, all those in favor signify with a check mark. If you're not in favor, with the next mark. All right. Mayor Christine Robinson here. I am in favor of the motion. Councilor Townsend, state your name and how you're voting.
Councilor Townsend in favor.
Councilor Hergert, state your name and how you're voting.
Councilor Hergert, yes.
Councilor Shea, state your name and how you're voting.
Councilor Shea, yes.
Deputy Mayor Hutchinson, state your name and how you're voting.
Deputy Mayor Hutchinson in favor.
Councilor Hamilton, state your name and how you're voting.
Councilor Hamilton, yes.
Councilor Hutchinson, state your name and how you're voting.
Councilor Hutchinson in favor.
Motion carried. So we, if you could clear your dashboard, Madam CIO, thank you very much for getting those submissions in by the deadline today. And we look forward to a report in terms of our success rate and also those backgrounders that, that we will need. Thank you very much. We are now moving on to new business items, 7.2. Hanover, Town of Hanover request. Oh, wait a minute, Town of Hanover, West Gray, Hanover Police Services amalgamation discussion. Madam CIO, we start the discussion and we'll go from there, or discussion point.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of council, this, this letter is before you and a slight apology on, on the administration part. I do believe that our clerk had provided additional documents by email. The December letter that's referenced in today's package. So apologies, that was, that was intended to be part of the package. So thank you for asking for that. This, this committee, the whole meeting was the first agenda that fit to have this later before us. So that's why you're seeing it today. And I leave, I will turn it back over to the chair.
Okay. Is there any questions or comments on this? Deputy Mayor Hutchinson, I see your hand.
Thank you, Mayor Robinson. I don't support the request from Hanover to have any further discussions on this police amalgamation. It didn't make sense a couple of years ago, and I don't see that would make any sense right now. We have two different services. They've got more of a town setup. We are, we have a couple of bourbons, but we are more rural. I think that West Gray is growing and we need to focus on our own future. Our police are providing our community with excellent service and they continue to improve on this. I think the community is very happy with it and I don't see why we need to take any more on. You know, we are working on the, the design and build of our new police services building. It's long overdue and I think we need to focus on making that a right fit for our existing services that we have in place. Want to refer back to the consultant, that report, I read it extensively, I don't know how many times. The call volumes are not balanced. We're going to be pulling from our own community to go service another talent. I don't see the benefit of that to anybody in our community. I guess, last but not least, I would like to put a motion forward that we file this as received and send communications back to Hanover that we're not interested. And, you know, if they're looking at different models, then that's something else to talk about, but not interested in amalgamation. So I would like to put that motion forward.
Okay, thank you for those comments and the motion on, with regard to procedure. Clerk Scherbek, could you please identify, am I now looking for a seconder on it? Is that correct? Okay, is there a seconder to this motion? Councilor Hutchinson, are you seconding this motion?
Councilor Hutchinson, yes, I second the motion.
Thank you. So Madam Clerk, I'm just taking comments or on the motion and then call the vote on the motion, correct? I want to make sure procedurally. Okay, so Counselor Townsend, then Counselor Hamilton.
Counselor Townsend, yes. I don't feel I have enough knowledge to do it based on what I've seen to say that we should just tell Hanover, no, thank you. I also believe it could be the beginning of an interesting discussion of expanding our service and actually being able to do it in a different way. And I'm not talking necessarily amalgamation, but I think we're way ahead of the game to be making a decision. I'd like to see the November 17th report. I didn't even know it was out there. And so I think council should review that. And respectfully, we should give our neighbor council the, the time to at least go through that review, look whether or not there's anything that appeals. The attachments that we received, other than the MAFIS letter implied, you know, there's lots of opportunities for both. I don't know if that's real. If we went into a service agreement similar to what we're going to do with Chasworth, does that work to our advantage or in positive for both? I don't know that either. So I think just to chop it off seems premature and I just want to be able to share that.
Councilor Hamilton, please.
Thank you, Mayor Robinson. And Counselor Townsend's comments resonate with me as well. The only information I've received at council is this letter that makes everything seem very favorable. I would be very much interested in, in seeing the consultants report or having that meet available to council. But one thought, so one that I, one thought I had was to have. To have our Chair and Vice Chair of the Police Services Board, who are also members of council, and our Chief of Police and our CIO, meet with Hanover in an informal way. Meet with their equivalents over there and just have a discussion and then come back and report back to council about the discussion and recommendations moving forward. Because right now, the only information I have in front of me is what we've received from Hanover and their perspective. And I have no other information. So I too am looking for a little bit more information, not necessarily kickstart the, the committee again, but just, just a meeting of the minds and then a report back to council. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Hutchinson, please.
Thank you, Mayor Robinson. Yeah, I, I'm hearing what the counselors are saying and I agree with what they're saying there, but this is regarding an amalgamation. If you're looking at it, providing a police service, that is a totally different model. This was going back to the amalgamation on the consultant's report is what they, they brought back off the shelf that was shelved prior to the past election. So we're talking about amalgamation here. We're not talking about. West Gray providing possibly a service to them. That's a different model. This is amalgamation discussion is what my understanding was. And that's where I'm just not, I'm not prepared to support any form of amalgamation. There is a different model. We could discuss that. Yes, they, you know, the staff could certainly discuss that, but we're talking about the amalgamation. And my issue is, it's, one is we don't need that hanging over. So we got enough stuff going on. And more importantly, the report I read, and it's, it's been available prior to the election, it's been hanging around. It's, it's, it's actually going to cost, it's going to end up costing, we're going to, we're going to end up with some service failures, which they've done a fantastic job of keeping our, our community safe. So that's why I'm not going to support an amalgamation. You want to talk about a different model? That's a different story and that's for another day. Thank you.
Councilor Hergert?
Yes, I also am left thinking, well, what was 2019 West Gray stats for our own policing? Do we even have capacity? So I'm looking to our police services rep, police board representatives to advise their own council. What are the numbers of 2019 stats? Do we have capacity?
Do we have capacity currently for, to take on an amalgamation?
I'm asked, like, I'm asking what our 2019 stats are? I don't have those.
They're not released yet. They're, they're not compiled. I do know that the annual report is being worked on right now. We actually had that confirmation from our chief, but the, those numbers are not available currently.
So I've, I believe that Hanover and West Gray are working together in, in sort of an unannounced way that they're making policies and procedures that are similar to each other in the event that they, Hanover needs overlap of coverage or in the event West Gray needs overlap of coverage. And I think to that point, it sounds like we are making policy and procedures similar to Hanover. I mean, we really are similar location. Do we have some urban and rural differences? Sure. We are next door neighbors though, and I don't see that cutting them off and saying, no, thank you, is the best way to respond.
So our policies are our own. There, we've got our board policies and then we have the operations policies for the West Gray Police Service.
So has there not been collaboration with Hanover on policing policies themselves? Maybe not the board. I guess the board would set those policies, internal policies of the police service?
Our operation policies are designed and by our police chief, but also in accordance with the West Gray Police Services Act. So they're within our West Gray Police Service.
So are those designed in, in parallel with Hanover's? Are there overlaps?
Our, we've only done our police operations with regard to our police chief for that. I think anything further, I would have to ask him on it, but I do know that he has created those policies in relation to the Police Services Act.
So back, back to efficiencies and policing efficiencies. I think that we do owe this to our residents to find efficiencies. We've gone through two budget cycles, this council, and we have. We have given the budgets to the police for them to be able to do their work. And, you know, I just am looking for. More efficiencies. We have a community safety wellbeing plan that is coming out. I would like to see if there's overlap between Hanover's needs and our needs.
Well, we do have a community safety plan that is being designed, that we do have representatives with our Chief, Chief Martin, as well as our CIO Laura Johnston. But I can tell you right now, members of committee, we do have Chief Martin on the line and I would like him to provide a response in terms of the procedures. Chief Martin?
Good morning or afternoon, council, my apologies. In terms of efficiencies, we are always looking for efficiencies. We are constantly looking for efficiencies. The procedures we have have been written and to confine with the police regulations and the law. We've also shared those with Ganon Oakway, Elmer, and other small services. We're not merging with those. In terms of our operability, we have very good operability because we work together with them to hopefully achieve the goal of public safety. And in terms of our stats, what exactly are you looking for, Counselor Hergert? We've gone through this before and our annual report is being completed and will not be completed yet simply because we've been dealing with a pandemic and a bit overworked right now.
But I can tell you that report is being worked on and I thank you very much for your due diligence, Chief, and the police service. But we do know that that report is underway, which I know that will be circulated to council at a later time.
So specifically, I would be looking for similarities between their needs and our needs. In all, all the different areas of policing.
That won't be addressed in the annual report. It's a report in terms of our service.
Right, so if I had our numbers, then I could look at their numbers and we could see where there were similarities. I don't have our numbers to say that we're a completely different service. Anyway, I will be supportive of Counselor Hamilton had a unique idea that it wasn't exactly kickstart this whole amalgamation, but go see if they're willing to have either an amalgamation. If they're stuck on that, they're stuck on that. If this is a joint board. You know, or if this is us providing service to them, then let's hear that too. Maybe their needs have changed since they originally sent this letter and since that whole committee was kicked off.
I'm going to go with Kelsir Hutchinson first, and then Kelsir Townsend, because Kelsir Townsend has spoken on this item. So I'm just going to go in that that lineup. Please, Kelsir Hutchinson, and then Kelsir Townsend.
Yeah, Kelsir Hutchinson here. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not in favor of doing much with this at this time. I think we can receive information, but but I'm not against maybe down the road having some further discussions about, you know, maybe providing services and whatnot. But as as our police chief has said, they're they're overworked these days. We're dealing with a pandemic. I don't think the timing is right. I wasn't in favor of it before when I was on council because their consultant, I don't think he really gave us a fair shake in terms of how it was presented. They really are a city, and policing for a city, the town of Hanover, it's a town, but it's less more like a city. Their policing needs are different than ours when we're we're a huge rural base. And so they don't, they don't look the same, they don't feel the same, and and you would have to police them differently, so. But again, down the road, you know, maybe next year or whatever, we get through the pandemic, maybe there'd be some interest in having some discussions of what their needs are and how we might be able to accommodate that. But definitely not in favor of amalgamating at this point, but I just think timing is wrong, and I would just, I would prefer to say, just defer this at this time.
Thank you. Kelsir Townsend?
Thank you. You know, I'm a great supporter of West Gray Police, and I believe that they do an amazing job, and I do agree they're overworked. I guess what got to me was the harshness of saying, no, and that's it, right? If we're willing to sit down and actually have a discussion about what they really need, because we don't want to go to amalgamation, and I, I guess, if we're going to make a decision today, we're not going to get a chance to read the report first, which I believe is wrong. I believe the council should have everything before it, not just pieces, before it makes a decision. We could defer it by responding to them and saying that, you know, pandemic's going on, we can't have the proper conversations, we're interested in having a conversation later about possibility, possible services, but not at this time and not amalgamation in a nice way, rather than just saying no. I would be in favor of that, right? And that's a little different than what was presented in the first motion.
Thank you. Any further questions before I call the vote or comments?
Well, thank you.
Thank you. On the, Kelsir Shea, please.
I think I basically support the deputy mayor's intention, which is that amalgamation should not be something that we're really entertaining. But I also think that Kelsir Hamilton and Kelsir Townsend made good points that we don't want to be rude to our neighbors. So I think if the, if this motion was amended to say, you know, we're, we're not able to, you know, enter into a discussion about amalgamation at this point, but we are willing to sit down with you at some point just to talk about your needs, it's probably not going to come to anything, but I do think it's the sort of the more friendly way to say no. So could we amend the motion to say something a little bit more diplomatic than just no? Something to the effect of, we are not prepared to, you know, talk, enter into a discussion about amalgamation at this point, but we would be willing to sit down with you once the pandemic situation has calmed down and just, you know, explore our, our respective policing needs.
Madam Clerk, is that a friendly amendment or or not in terms of how that's being done? The ideas that to receive because to not go into amalgamation, wondering if that is something that should be voted on first, and then if there is a second opportunity, and I'm looking to you for this, and a second opportunity to just enter into a discussion at some point, if there is some, some discussion at a later time. But on this first one, I see that it perhaps is not friendly because it's to receive for no amalgamation, but then if there's a second motion following this one in terms of that we could have it just a discussion at some point. Yeah, we're waiting for you to unmute. That's fine.
Thank you through you, your worship. Just to recap, the motion that is on the floor was moved by Deputy Mayor Hutchinson and seconded by Council Hutchinson, that correspondence from the Town of Hanover regarding West Gray, Hanover Police Services Amalgamation be received and filed, and that correspondence be sent to the Town of Hanover advising that West Gray is not entertaining police services amalgamation at this time. So the amendment to say that we'd like to discuss policing needs at a future date, I think is a separate, is best addressed as a resolution following this, that this should probably be addressed as it stands, and then move forward if somebody would like to move or second a resolution that addresses that correspondence further or adds in future discussion about policing needs.
Okay. So Kelsir Shea, that's the procedural comment. So we would address this first motion and have called the vote, and then there may be an opportunity if you wish to move a second motion in terms of having a discussion.
That would be fine with me.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Hutchinson, please.
Thank you, Mayor Robinson. And yes, I didn't want to come off heavy handed. It was the word amalgamation is what I was trying to present. And I did make reference to the fact that if they want to look at us providing police services, that's a different model. So, yeah, I agree with with what Kelsir Shea said, and I would gladly support that, but amalgamation is what I was trying to get across. Thank you, Mayor Robinson.
Thank you. So on the first motion, Madam CAO, would you read it, and then I will call the vote.
Through you, your worship. Moved by Deputy Mayor Hutchinson, seconded by Council Hutchinson, that correspondence from the Town of Hanover regarding the West Gray, Hanover Police Services Amalgamation be received and filed, and that correspondence be sent to the Town of Hanover advising that West Gray is not entertaining police services amalgamation at this time.
All those in favor, please signify with a check mark. Those not in favor, with a next mark. I will start. Mayor Christine Robinson, I am in favor of this motion. Kelsir Hutchinson, state your name and how you're voting.
Kelsir Hutchinson, in favor.
Kelsir Hamilton, state your name and how you're voting.
Kelsir Hamilton, yes.
Deputy Mayor Hutchinson, state your name and how you're voting.
Deputy Mayor Hutchinson, in favor.
Kelsir Shea, state your name and how you're voting. Kelsir Shea, state your name and how you're voting.
Kelsir Shea, yes.
Kelsir Hergert, state your name and how you're voting.
Kelsir Hergert, no.
Kelsir Townsend, state your name and how you're voting.
Kelsir Townsend, in favor.
Motion carried. Kelsir Shea, if you could all clear your dashboards, please. Kelsir Shea, is there anything further?
Well, I think other people had a motion. I think Kelsir Hamilton or Kelsir Townsend wanted to sort of move this forward. I was just sort of riding on their idea.
Okay. Kelsir Hamilton?
Well, thank you, Kelsir Shea and Mayor Robinson. Yeah, just just a follow through at the appropriate time that that we invite the chair and vice chair of the police board, who are also council members, and our police chief be invited and then CAO to meet with Hanover to discuss policing needs, and that they report back to council with their findings and recommendations.
Thank you. Kelsir Townsend, are you seconding that motion?
Yes, I'm seconding the motion. I'm also wondering if we could be a little more specific to see, like a friendly amendment to say that, to look for common ground, right? Which implies you're looking for something that works for both, and if you don't find it, obviously, you wouldn't proceed.
That'll be part of our discussion.
Right.
Okay. Any comments on the motion? All those in favor, please signify with a check mark. If you're not in favor of that, signify with a next mark. Christine Robinson here, Mayor, I am in favor of that motion. Kelsir Hutchinson, state your name and how you're voting.
Kelsir Hutchinson, in favor.
Kelsir Hamilton, state your name and how you're voting.
Kelsir Hamilton, yes.
Deputy Mayor Hutchinson, state your name and how you're voting.
Deputy Mayor Hutchinson, in favor.
Kelsir Shea, state your name and how you're voting.
Kelsir Shea, yes.
Kelsir Hergert, state your name and how you're voting.
Kelsir Hergert, yes.
Kelsir Townsend, state your name and how you're voting.
Kelsir Townsend, in favor.
Motion carried. Please clear your dashboard. So at this point, Madam Clerk, where are we at in the agenda? So these are the only two new business items on this agenda, is that correct? And so now we are on, wait a minute, item eight? So I'm looking to you to read the motion first. Where I'll get you unmuted, please.
Thank you. And through you, your worship, the final recommendation is that Committee of the Whole does now adjourn at 3:09 PM.
Is there a mover for this motion? Kelsir Hutchinson, sorry, sorry. Deputy Mayor Hutchinson, are you moving this motion?
Deputy Mayor Hutchinson, I'll move the motion.
Kelsir Hutchinson, are you seconding this motion?
Kelsir Hutchinson, second the motion.
All those in favor, please signify with a check mark. If you're not in favor, with the next mark. Mayor Christine Robinson here, I'm in favor of the motion. Kelsir Townsend, state your name and how you're voting.
Kelsir Townsend, in favor.
Kelsir Hergert, state your name and how you're voting.
Kelsir Hergert, yes.
Kelsir Shea, state your name and how you're voting.
Kelsir Shea, yes.
Deputy Mayor Hutchinson, state your name and how you're voting.
Deputy Mayor Hutchinson, in favor.
Kelsir Hamilton, state your name and how you're voting.
Kelsir Hamilton, yes.
Kelsir Hutchinson, state your name and how you're voting.
Kelsir Hutchinson, in favor.
Motion carried. We do stand adjourned. Thank you very much, one and all.